Good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for June 17, 2014. We'll begin with the special order calendar, decision items. Item number one, 27886BZ, 1677 Brookner Boulevard, De Bronx. The office of Eric Klatnik.
Good morning, Todd Dale on behalf of Eric Klatnik.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shuni Vasan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Item number two, 14292BZ, 473-541-6TH STREET, Brooklyn. The office of Kramer Levin, Naftalas and Frank. Police wagon for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shuni Vasan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Item number three, 11-93BZ, 4645 Kissinah Boulevard, Queens. The office of Sheldon Lobel.
Jordan Moes from Sheldon Lobel on behalf of the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shuni Vasan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number four, 32609BZ, 37-10 Union Street, Queens. The office of Brian Cave.
Judy Gallant, Brian Cave, on behalf of the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shuni Vasan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number five, 49-11BZ, 135 West 20th STREET, Manhattan. The office of Washer Bernstein.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shuni Vasan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Continued hearing items, item number six, 61152BZ, 3535 24TH STREET, Queens. The office of Gerald J. Coliendo.
Good morning, Sandy Anagnostu representing the applicant.
All right, I think we had two questions, Vice Chair.
Could you just clear up the language in your given third letter that says there is no change proposed because in fact you're asking us to extend the time to construct that change?
Yes, I'll revise the statement.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, and the second issue was that I believe that the drawings that you put into the record for the proposal doesn't include the enlargement.
I understand, we will be revising those plans, however, I would like to request some additional time because we've ordered those records from archives.
Okay.
And I understand from the BSA staff, I should be receiving them in three weeks. I also tried to locate them at the Department of Buildings and they're not available. I also requested them from the property owner and unfortunately, he doesn't have them. But I am trying to obtain them from the previous applicant, Mr. Morsolino, who has retired, but maybe either from him or from the archives, I should have them very soon and we will be revising the proposed conditions plans to reflect the enlargement that was approved previously.
Previously granted. In fact, if you have the previously approved drawings, that can just be entered into the record because you're planning to build according to those plans, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any speakers on this item? Any speakers? All right, if there are no speakers, we can close the hearing. We'll leave the record open for you to revise your statement and to provide us with the previously approved plan. And we'll give you enough time for you to do that, so why don't we bring you back in August? So if you could submit to us on August 12th, we could vote this out on August 19th.
Great, thank you.
Motion to close.
Chair Shuni Vasan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye. Thank you.
Item number seven, calendar number seven, 5178BZ, 200-15 Northern Boulevard, Queens. Rothkrieg, Rothkrieg Inspector.
Good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant.
Well, we received your recent submission, are there any questions for the applicant?
No.
We were satisfied, are there any speakers on the site, Tim? Yes.
Good morning, my name is Henry Ulller, I'm First Vice President of the Orvindale Improvement Association, also a member of Community Board 11, but I'm here today representing my civic association. We have issues with this particular application still. The tires that were on display in the open part of the lot are still there. They're no longer on racks, but there's piles of new and used tires continually on the open part of the lot. At night, the used tires remain there overnight. And this is quite an unacceptable idea because of all the rain that we've had recently, there's a danger that mosquitoes will be breeding. We have residents right across the street, we have a 400-unit nursing home right across the street and an elementary school right up the block. So those tires have to be put away at night and even during the day, we don't like that. It's an eyesore in the community and it's unacceptable. We also take note that the dumpster is frequently left open. If you look at picture nine that I submitted, you'll see the dumpster was left open at night, overflowing. This is not what we want in our community. Even during the day, I've noticed the dumpster open. We also would request that the storage unit that is there for the tires, for the new tires, be repainted. It's rusting out, it looks bad, and it should be painted a complementary color to the building, even if it's pink. And also, we'd like landscaping around the east side and the north side of the building. I think that would hide part of the building and it would be more palatable to the community. Now, with regard to the hours of operation, they have reduced their hours to what we had requested. But I had noticed in the statement that was submitted by Mr. Dale that there was, they were questioning the hours, comparing it to other businesses in the community. The businesses that they compared it to are not auto-related businesses except for Pep Boys. And I don't think the auto and tire business has the, it has a more serious impact on the community than those other businesses. So the hours that we recommended previously, the eight to eight during weekdays, eight to six on Saturdays and closed on Sundays is what we want to see happen. We are having a big problem with Pep Boys that has more hours than that, and we've been working with Senator Avella to try to correct the problems at Pep Boys. And we're going to continue to do so. The applicant also did not mention that there's another tire and auto place right around the corner called Prella. You heard the variance a while back, and their hours of operations are six to six, weekdays, six to three Saturdays, closed Sundays. And that's fine, that's just what the kind of hours we want to see. We want to see people getting a break at night and we want no business operating on Sundays. And that's my statement, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ulller. I know that the board had received photographs which in fact seemed to show that the tires were taken care of, but these photographs that you provided for us was taken just last week, is that correct?
Yes, last week and Sunday night.
Okay. I think the hours, and I could be wrong, the hours that they're requesting are, isn't it eight to nine Monday to Saturday?
Uh...
Sunday closed, but we can confirm that.
Okay.
But you were, the hours that you talked about were eight to eight, Monday to Friday, eight to six?
Saturday.
Saturday and closed on Sunday?
Yes.
Okay, and those are the hours that are similar to...
Prella, right around the corner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next speaker, Ms. Pumari.
Good morning, I'm Terri Pumari, the President of Orvindale Improvement Association. Usually when we get to this point, to the Board of Standards and Appeals on a variance, we find that the applicant is really being very tight with the conditions that he's agreed to because he wants to come in with good behavior, if you will, to the variance. We're not finding that with this applicant. I counted the tires last Saturday about 6:30, I counted 82 tires, the used tires on the eastern wall. Sunday I went around and it was still 82 tires, and that was, I think, in the afternoon or evening. And then Monday I went around in the day and they were already open by that time, it was about 10 o'clock or so, and there were 36 new tires in front of the bays, that wall space between the bays. The problem is, of course, as Henry mentioned, the water. And I just was telling Henry on the TV last night, there's a new disease that mosquitoes transmit and there's no cure, so we really have to protect the community. The community is a residential community within a block of Northern Boulevard. You've passed it, some of you, in fact, you found another applicant in violation of what he had agreed to the very day he was going to get it, and he was notified, you better withdraw the application without prejudice, which he did, he later on sold the property, that was the Ryder truck on 189th STREET. The hours have to, I think, stay with what the Community Board recommended. The Community Board is a larger community than these four blocks and they've investigated and that's what we want for our community. It's basically a residential community. And if Prella can agree to this an hour less in their variance, then I think that Genesis can too. So it's storage, it's time, and it's time for them to come up to snuff, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Right, Ms. Dale?
Todd Dale again for the applicant. With respect to the hour study, we just looked at the local, the closest, you know, businesses by proximity, but I would note that we did include the Pep Boys and the hours of the Pep Boys are much more expansive than the hours that we're proposing right now.
Right, can you just clarify the hours that you're proposing right now?
Eight to nine, Monday to Saturday.
Okay, it's eight to nine, Monday to Saturday, okay.
And considering, I know that there are different businesses, but there are two 24-hour establishments right on that corner, the Pep Boys Auto Shop has more expansive hours, and although there are residential uses, I think anyone who goes up and down Northern Boulevard realizes that it is entirely commercial in this particular area, and the hours of being proposed are not only consistent, but less than most of the businesses in the area. So, you know, with respect to concerns raised by the community, the agreement to close on Sundays, we're being, you know, other businesses are open Sunday, we agreed to be closed Sunday. This particular operator thinks that the eight to nine as opposed to the six to six serves their needs and their community better.
What about eight to eight?
Eight to eight?
I think that's what the Community Board is recommending.
Well, they're also saying eight to six on Saturday, which they wanted to say...
Right, okay, so maybe two more hours over there, but will you talk to your client about that?
We can talk to eight to eight, but I would say that eight to nine is entirely consistent based on the hours that we've shown, and if they feel that those extra hour helps them with, you know, customers bringing in cars after work...
Right, I think the concern is that on one hand, you're asking for greater hours and on the other hand, the tires which really should not be outside continue to be outside. You know, maybe plus just a moment in time, we had a photograph that, for the purposes of satisfying the board, showed that the tires were taken care of. But it seems that if, if the number of tires can't be stored on the site, we should know that. And he, your client may have to find some alternative arrangement, or they should place them inside at least, you know, at nighttime and close them.
I, you know, I realize your type, but as far as the hour issue, we'll talk to them about the eight o'clock, but they really did feel originally the nine o'clock proposal, but we'll bring it up to the operator and see what they say. As far as the tires, I actually took those photographs when I went to the site and there were no tires there, and I didn't speak to anybody. I drive up and down Northern Boulevard and I've driven by a few times, and one time I saw maybe three tires that were outside, not disputing these other photographs, but we'll reemphasize to them that the tires need to be there. With respect to the tires though, they did bring in the storage container. I do know that they filled that with a lot of tires, and I knew that they were working on moving these tires off-site. I think that they have another business location elsewhere where they are able to store the extra inventory there. But we'll reemphasize to them that the tires...
Right, and can you just get some kind of letter from them, just explaining to us how many tires they keep on-site on a regular basis?
Okay.
And then we can understand whether they can actually...
We can definitely do that.
...physically be stored. And I think painting the, the storage area could easily be done. It does have graffiti and I think that's minor.
That's under, they were, plans underway, it's not painted, but yes, we agree that the storage container should be painted.
All right.
I don't know if they're going to paint it pink, but it'll be...
Okay, and will you also look at the landscaping, if that's a possibility?
We can look at that, so the container, the landscaping, and we'll approach them about the hours.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, what, just to clarify, because we saw photos of the dumpster sort of overflowing, when does that dumpster get picked up and perhaps it needs to have a couple more times a day that it gets picked up?
I don't know, I'll have to check on that. I don't know what the dumpster pickups are.
Okay. How much time do we need?
As far as the information, you know, getting the answers to this, I mean, we could have answers very quickly, like within a week or two weeks, as far as if landscaping were to take place, obviously we couldn't get that done in that time, but we can, I think...
But you can reflect that on your plans at least and talk about the timeframe.
Right, if we, we could submit with either, within a week or two weeks, whatever works for the board.
All right, why don't we suggest, why don't I suggest July 15th as your submission date, and then we can have the hearing on July 29th. So that should give you enough time to put all that in order.
Item number eight, calendar number seven, 7585BZ, 133-33 Brookville Boulevard, Queens. Sheldon Lobel.
Jordan Moes from Sheldon Lobel on behalf of the applicant.
Any questions of the applicant? Any questions? Any speakers on this item? Any speakers? All right, we just have one comment, I think if you can just, in your drawings, show us just a detail, just cut a cross-section of...
Sure, the site is, it's hard to see it, we'll show you a, like an elevation so you can see the fence, the bushes, the tree...
Yes, and maybe a detail, right, exactly, so maybe it's a detail on another drawing if it can't fit in with that.
I understand, yes.
Okay. All right, if you can provide that to us, we can otherwise close the hearing. If you can submit to us on July 8th, we could vote this out on July 22nd.
Is there any way to, July, is July 15th a, a possible decision date?
Well, let's just say July 8th and July 22nd, okay? Motion to close.
July 22nd?
July 22nd, yes. Motion to close.
Chair Shuni Vasan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Thank you.
Item number nine, calendar number 24503BZ, 160-11 Willetts Point Boulevard, Queens. Jeffrey Chester.
Jeffrey Chester, Gonzales, Saggio and Harlem for the applicant. Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. I was at Executive Session, I think a couple of questions came up, or a couple of minor issues, I believe Commissioner Montanez noticed that there was some type of cardboard signage thing, no, above the...
That was the...
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Otley Brown.
Yeah, you had removed most of that extra signage, however, on top of the menu board, you still, your photo still shows something?
I, I saw that, I brought it up with the, with the owner-operator yesterday, it'll be, it's removed now.
Okay.
And I think the only other issue had to do with a speed bump that was shown on the plans.
Uh huh.
I'm told that particularly this past winter with snow plowing, it kept getting removed, it kept getting knocked off, they, they want to, they preferred, they preferred to remove it, is what they would prefer to do at this point because it's apparently a, you know, a problem that recurs every winter, so we could take it off the plans if that's okay with the board.
Well, I think it was part of the prior discussion with the Community Board, that it was something they requested previously?
In one of the previous resolutions?
Right.
But if that's the case, just to wrap it up, then we'll...
I just felt it was, you know, a safety item, you know, for the pedestrians?
Yeah, mhm.
That the cars would slow down exiting the drive-through.
Well, then it will be replaced.
Okay.
So if you can show that on your drawings then?
They could do it sort of as an asphalt bump as opposed to an applied rubber bumper that would, you know, not come off when the snowplow hit it.
All right, it'll be done, right?
It will be done.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any speakers on this item? Any speakers? Okay, so we can close the hearing, if you can show that on your drawings, show the speed bump, and also if you can provide us a photograph showing the removal of the, the cardboard that's above the menu board. And if you can submit to us on July 8th, we can vote this out on July 22nd.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion to close.
Chair Shuni Vasan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
New cases, item number 10, calendar number 99784BZ, 798 through 804 Union Street, Brooklyn, Sheldon Lobel.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, name's Irving Menken, representing Sheldon Lobel, PC. We, I reviewed the comments of the board on the executive session yesterday and it's quite gratifying. I'll give you just a very rapid review of the application and then comment on your comments and indicate what I have an unusual request. This building is an 85-year-old building, it never was legal, it was, its birth certificate was with a BSA variance for a garage back in 1929, and then it went through extensions of time, extensions of terms because of its ongoing incompatibility with surrounding neighborhood. During World War II, it apparently shifted to factory use, use, the variance was modified, and then it reverted back to garage use, and the latest garage special permit expires next year, which is, which is why it impacts on my, what I'm talking about with regard to the Community Board. Now, I agree with the board that the proposed use is not only compatible with the zoning, it's also compatible with the neighborhood. So it truly brings it into compliance with what undoubtedly the board would have authorized, presumably, many, many, many years ago. Now, the, the problem is logistics. The, and in regard to the question of floor area, the, because there's going to be a five-foot reduction of floor area for a width of 92 feet on each of the second through six floors, there'll be a reduction of approximately 25, 2600 square feet of zoning floor area. It will be offset slightly by the construction of the bulkhead for the stairway and elevators at the roof level. It, that implies with permitted obstructions at roof, so that the, there will be, still be a net reduction of floor area of approximately 1,200 square feet. But if the board wishes a table to be prepared by the architect identifying floor by floor existing and proposed?
Yes.
We will gladly do so.
Okay, if you can do that.
Right?
Just to clarify though, that you're providing a bulkhead which, so that's one area, but there's also a unit with mezzanine, is that correct? In the front?
There's, well, there's an existing bulkhead for the elevator at the front, at the street wall.
Okay.
That is, that will be converted to residential floor area itself, so that also offsets the reduction at the rear wall.
Okay, but that, I just want to make sure that that bulkhead, the existing bulkhead which is now being converted to residential space is within the envelope that there is right now, correct?
It's only the envelope that's in there now.
Okay, all right.
There will be no enlargement of that bulkhead.
Good, because I don't think that otherwise would really be categorized as a permitted obstruction. And so then you have the bulkhead which is towards the back or in the middle of the building, which is new?
Yes.
And that has some square footage, but that's what's being recaptured from the five foot that's being removed from the building?
That's correct.
Okay.
So there'll still be a net reduction, as I said, of approximately 1,200 square feet. Now...
All right, if you can provide us a table, that would be great.
Okay.
And, and your understanding and belief is that the new bulkhead would be allowed as a permitted obstruction in a contextual district?
Yes, if, if the board wishes, I'll ask the architect to indicate that in the, in the analysis of zoning, the zoning information, that I pinpoint it quite well.
Okay, and, and we can also make sure that the Buildings Department reviews that change.
Now, a question was raised about the rear yard of the building, behind the building?
Yes.
Fronting on President Street. The multiple dwelling law for this scenario, for those buildings that are only 40 feet high, only requires a total of 20 feet. So that the five feet on, at the garage property and 15 feet in the rear yards of President Street would meet the multiple dwelling law requirements for the light in there, because the buildings are so short, they're approximately 40 feet.
You mean the buildings, the rear are short because this building's tall, so...
Yes, yeah, so, and they all have rear yard requirements, and unless the buildings are demolished and the community facility building is built with a, with a possible one-story extension, those buildings are not coming any closer to the building that we're discussing.
Right, so even if they enlarge and they build out to the 30 feet, you'd still have 30 feet and five feet, 35 feet, which would be less than the 40 feet, that's 20 feet that's required, is that correct?
Well, the, no, no, if, if they build, if they have a 30-foot rear yard?
Yes.
As they have now?
Right.
That's, that's more, that's double what is required by the multiple dwelling law.
Right, because it's required to be 20 feet, is that true?
Correct.
Okay.
What if they were vertically enlarged?
What's that?
What if they were vertically enlarged also?
If they were vertically, it's, it's, the alternative provisions of the multiple dwelling law under the subsection that I cited in the submission indicates that it has to be a minimum of 20 feet or one-third of the building height, whichever is more. So the building heights are with about 40 feet, the 20 feet obviously is more than 13. They would have to go up very high for it, for the, for the, one-third of building height of the buildings on President Street to be controlling. And I don't think that's reality because you have to reconstruct the buildings. They would basically have to demolish and reconstruct for a higher multiple dwelling, for, for a multiple dwelling bigger than, taller than it to have now.
And do you know whether the district on President Street, is that also, and, is that an R6A district or...
Yes, the R6A.
All right.
Now, the reason I, I waffle at the beginning is even though we made a submission to the board, the, the BSA on, on January 27th, and we made another submission in response to the notice of comments on May 5th, and each and every time we forwarded to Community Board Six and got a signed receipt, for some peculiar reason there was, it fell between the desks there, and they were informed, I understand with the courtesy of the planner at the BSA and one of our partners at our firm, they, we communicated with the Community Board and they had, they scheduled an emergency public hearing on May 22nd. And I appeared and testified on all the issues and answered, responded to all the questions, and the, the members of the Land Use Committee, combination of, and Community Board members appeared to be satisfied, but they felt that there wasn't sufficient public notice given to the residents. So they, they want, they rescheduled continued hearing to June 26th. And they asked that I ask this board to postpone a hearing, and I declined to agree with that because we, we have a, next year, this special, current special permit expires, we have summer coming on, and delays would be prejudicial to our client. So we reached a compromise that was acceptable to them, that we, I would ask this board to, if you're amenable to closing the hearing, to afford the Community Board and the residents and to affect the property owners sufficient time to submit any comments after the June 26th public hearing at the, at the Community Board. And if it pleases this, this board that if you would allow the, require the Community Board to comment by July 8th and I to respond a week later, that's all I need is a week and render a decision thereafter, I would be appreciative and I think the Community Board would also be communitative.
All right.
Appreciative. Now, what I did, in addition to meeting that obligation that I, that I had with the Community Board, we also sent out notices after I ordered an emergency list of correct the property owners, I had sent out notices to all of the community affected property owners of this hearing and the anticipated adjourned Community Board hearing and offering them an opportunity to submit their comments as well. So their, their open, openness that they sought, we exceeded, I believe.
Okay, so that's in the event that we close the hearing, but I understand that the Community Board is going to hold its hearing now in June 26th, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I just have one other comment. Other, other questions for the applicant right now? All right, I had a comment which had to do with the drawings themselves, and, which I did not mention yesterday, but there, I think there are a lot of, the way you've shown your units includes the layouts of each apartment, I don't think we need to see that, and I would recommend that you remove the internal layout so that the Buildings Department can review for light and air, because that's something that we're not reviewing over here. And so I think, as shown, there, there may be spaces, at this point, I think you haven't called them out as anything, but I don't think we necessarily need that information for us to support the project. The internal layout of the units can be reviewed by the Buildings Department, and they can ensure that you meet all the light and air requirements for each unit.
Well, I might ask the Board if you would reconsider that, for this reason. When I was ready to file six, eight, ten months ago, and what happened is, the client wanted, the building, the Building Department gave the client two choices. One, come to the Board and have a decision on our request, our request for a, under eleven forty-one-
Mm-hmm.
...then get objections by the Building Department that might send us back to you again, or agree to a complete examination by the Building Department, which then ensued. So they spent about six months with the Building Department, and the plans that we submitted to you are exactly what the Building Department agreed approximately two months ago was acceptable to them with the interior layouts.
I understand, but we haven't seen those Building Department drawings, and if, if in fact that is the case, it shouldn't be a problem if you remove it from our drawings, so...
I, I agree with you, except I'm fearful that it might be a, a signal to the Building Department that somehow they, that their approval, interim approvals being questioned.
Well, I-
That's my only concern.
Believe me, I don't think that that's going to be an issue. I think we can clarify that to the Buildings Department, is, is not that we're, we believe that the internal layout as shown to us not as acceptable, it's just that it's not really within our purview, and we would just rely and defer to the Buildings Department. I don't think that should be a problem, Mr. Minkin.
Very well.
I think it'd be helpful for us. I think I'm more concerned about the fact that if these layouts are shown on our drawings and the Board has not engaged in the analysis to see whether they are compliant with light and air, the Buildings Department may assume that the Board has approved these internal layouts and we haven't. So that's the reason why I'm suggesting we do it. We've asked other applicants to do it, nobody's said anything before.
Very well, we'll, we'll have that done.
Okay.
And if a question arises, we, we know who to ask.
Yeah, exactly. All right. Are there speakers on this item? Any speakers? Yes, you're here to speak on this, please come forward.
Please state your name for the record, you'll be given three minutes.
Yep, my name is Jonathan Duroe, I live at seven ninety Union Street, just down the street from this development. I'd like to start before reading my submission to dispute a few things the previous speaker said. I was at the CB six land use meeting. First of all, they were not at all satisfied with the submission that was made by the speaker. Also, it was not an emergency session, it was a regularly scheduled session, there was no notification whatsoever of the neighbors, and there has still been no notification of this meeting or the coming meeting of the neighbors. This is a, a bridge version of a letter that I've sent to the Chair, I think you've received already. "The neighbors of the Park Slope Garage at seven ninety-eight, eight oh four, Union Street are against granting a zoning variance to convert the building to residential and retail use, because we, we believe it will negatively impact the residence of Park Slope. The loss of the two hundred and thirty parking spaces will exacerbate the traffic on Union Street, as well as the neighborhood as a whole. A two thousand and seven transportation alternative study of Park Slope found that forty-five percent of all neighborhood traffic was cars in search of parking. The garage is the main parking site for the sixteen thousand, three hundred members of the Park Slope Food Co-op at seven eighty-two Union Street. Eliminating this parking location will mean even more cars circling the neighborhood in search of on-street parking. Traffic on Union Street is already a serious problem, delivery trucks generally double-park, reducing traffic to a single lane. Adding more than seven thousand square feet of retail space will only increase the number of commercial vehicles double-parked, as will UPS and FedEx trucks delivering to an additional twenty-eight families at this location. This constitutes a serious safety issue, as the fire trucks from Squad One at seven eighty-eight Union Street regularly require easy access and frequently run into blockages, especially when heading east on Union Street towards Seventh Avenue. These twenty-eight residential units would fall within the PS three twenty-one school zone, this benefit will surely be emphasized with prospective buyers. The school is already at least thirty percent over capacity and cannot accommodate additional children. The current building is more than fifty percent larger than current zoning is allowed, and twenty-four feet taller. This doesn't include the planned bulkhead, which would rise an additional sixteen feet. The plan provides for no parking, though current zoning for such a building would require a minimum of fourteen spaces. If the owners claim that this conversion is necessary to obtain a better return on his investment, there's an easy solution that would leave the garage intact. At the Park Slope Garage across the street, a building that was converted to parking condominiums twenty-five years ago, a parking spot sold for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on June third of this year. Selling just two hundred spaces in the current garage would net the owner thirty-two million dollars, while leaving intact the use and character of the building. The community would support a variance to allow such a conversion to parking condos. Our interaction with the owner to date has indicated his total disregard for the community. He failed to notify residents as required in advance of the CB six land use committee meeting, and then failed to send copies of the plans to residents as promised after that meeting. Zoning laws were put into place to protect the neighborhood from a project such as this, one that provides no tangible benefit to the residents, but a big payday to the owner at our expense. There is no way the new residential-retail structure of this size, built right to the lot line on all sides-
I'm sorry, yes-
...will be allowed in Park Slope, and there's no reason to approve this conversion in its current form. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Dave Nimmens, I'm the property owner of the property right behind this. We're actually catty-corner, so we share in a budding wall, and I'm just beginning to understand this process, but what I want you to understand right now is that it's been a festival of bad faith. The first, my neighbors received a letter from a lawyer a while ago on this project, saying that they would need to get through the, an elderly couple, saying they would need to get through their house in order to do this project, and they would get it one way or another. We then received a letter, I received a letter stating that a project was going ahead, and they were concerned to remediate the damages of my property. I looked at the DO, at the Department of Buildings website, and there was no, nothing issued, except a long string of violations. So they were telling me that there was something going on when there wasn't. The next thing we knew, a notice went up the night before a meeting, so obviously there was not a great intent to get a lot of people there, that's the meeting alluded to. And now, we now have a lawyer letter saying, oh, by the way, which I received yesterday, saying, by the way, there's this meeting today. So I'm just asking you, in your judgment, to realize and recognize, merits aside, and that we're going to be getting to, and John has addressed some of them, this is not op, this does not give confidence that these are people who are operating in any good faith whatsoever, and then they've done this repeatedly with lots of different sort of nasty, threatening, or somewhat sort of shady things, and we're not even, we're just the beginning of the process. So I'd like you to have that in your hopper as you're thinking about what's being presented to you in this, as we go along in this. I will be, many of us, I think, will be talking at the hearing in June, so we can actually address some of the more substantive issues, but I wanted you to have this from our perspective as a neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right, Mr. Minkin, are you here to speak on this item, please come forward. Are you here to speak on this item? No, okay. Mr. Minkin?
Well, I couldn't send out the distributed notice of the hearing by Community Board Six until they gave me the document telling me when and where. And as I explained earlier, that there seemed to have been a slippage in their office, they initially thought in their dialogue with us, when the, the Board of Standards and Appeals Planner communicated, asked us to communicate with them and get their input, that they realized that they hadn't followed up on our two notices to them over a period of four months, and it was their decision to hold that expeditious public hearing and sent us the notice to distribute, to, 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 to appear four, three days later. We received their, a copy of their public hearing notice, information as to where it's going to be, and instructed us to be there on that Thursday, three days later. So much as I would have liked to have done it earlier- What's that?
That meeting was supposed to be held in May? Because, I guess I'm confused, I thought it was on June twenty-sixth.
No, no, I'm talking about the first one.
Okay, the first-
That the, one of the first gentleman that spoke in opposition claimed that we somehow, for some presumably nefarious reason, withheld notification. We couldn't notify anybody until we got the information from the Community Board, and they gave us three days' notice, even though a month earlier they'd received our copy of the amended application.
Okay, but at this point, you've done the notice that's required by the Community Board for June twenty-sixth?
It will be, it's imminent, because the Community Board asked me to inform the, remind the Community Board staff of the June twenty-sixth date, and to send me information as to the time and place. They, we haven't received it yet, so what I did is, I, I had their office fax them a reminder to please inform me, so that we can immediately send out their notice and post it to all the parties that, that wish to be heard and speak at the, at June twenty-sixth meeting.
Okay, so that's-
As of yesterday, we had not received a response. I'm hopeful we receive it today, so we don't have a repetition of this allegations that we're somehow delaying it. We're delaying nothing, and I couldn't send out the notice that I told you about, about this hearing, until I received the list of affected property owners. After the May twenty-second hearing at Community Board Six, I immediately requested a consultant to furnish me that information. The day, the day after we received it is when the letters went out to the, all the affected property owners of this hearing and the imminent hearing on June twenty-sixth by Community Board Six.
All right, so just to be clear, because I'm, I'm hearing two things, you've, you've notified the people that, of the June twenty-sixth hearing?
The, the, all the people that are affected property owners within four hundred feet-
Okay, within four hundred feet.
...have been notified that there will be one, and as soon as I'm informed by the Community Board when and where, they will be notified again. And in addition, we will notify-
Because you haven't been-
...people within five hundred feet as well, as the Community Board requests.
All right, I just want to notify, at least let people know that in terms of our own process, there isn't a requirement to notify people within four hundred feet. The Community Board may have its own process, and obviously, that's something that's, I'm sorry, we're not going to take any questions right now.
All right. Yeah.
No, I just, I just want, you've got a real big public relations problem here, and you really need to develop a plan to reach out to these neighbors and explain what is going on here. I mean, we read it, we're sort of zoning experts, we know that what the zoning allows. It allows the retail, it allows the residential, it doesn't allow the garage without a variance. Doesn't sound like that's even been explained to the neighbors.
We tried, Commissioner.
Not, not, not good enough, not good enough.
We, we know the fault.
And then you came here today and asked us to close the hearing? I, I, I don't think, I don't, I don't think that works.
Well, it seems that there's a forum where this presentation is going to take place, hopefully on June twenty-sixth, where you will have the opportunity to explain to everyone the full extent of this amendment before us. I think the concern that the Vice Chair is raising is that, because certain parts of this are really more as of right, the conversion itself is something which, from a zoning standpoint, makes the use of the building more conforming than it is right now. Currently, the Board keeps allowing the, a ten-year extension because the use is non-conforming and is not allowed by the district. So there's some pros and cons to this conversion, but, you know, I would recommend that you try and clarify the basis in which you're asking this Board to request this change. I think there may be, maybe a misunderstanding that this is sort of a whole new, different project, but it's, it's really about making the building more as of right. And I, I don't know if you're able to relinquish the grant altogether, but that's something you can, I, I think, also discuss with them, which is the, what is the basis of the grant, and what's still within the Board's jurisdiction with some of the changes that are becoming more as of right. But I did want to just raise one issue, which is that, you know, technically, you can argue that maybe parking is not a requirement within this building, but since you are providing, I think, twenty, it's twenty-eight units-
Yes.
-and normally you would be providing parking, and that this building has, is a parking garage, could you consider, leaving aside the technical aspects, but at least provide the parking for the units that you're proposing?
Well, twenty-eight units in a zone requires fourteen spaces-
Yes.
...by applicable zoning resolution-
Okay.
...require parking. But then in another section, the zoning says if you require less than twenty, you, all these spaces that are quote, required are waived. So we fall well below that magic number of twenty that permits a waiver, and part of the economics of this project, obviously, is the retail establishment. And that retail establishment is only seven thousand square feet, and to carve out part of that for parking or driveway down to the garage would, that reduces the storage area for the retail, I believe, and the, the client-
Well, Mr. Minkin, instead of giving us the answer, can you-
...can be economic disaster.
Right, can you at least explore this and give us a full explanation? You could provide, you have elevators right now that take the cars to the lower level, isn't that correct?
Yes, but that elevator is going to be disappearing.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that there may be possibilities of providing parking within the building. I don't know what the other Commissioners think, but it's something to explore. I only say this because I think there is some recognition that parking is a commodity in this neighborhood, and it may actually be to the advantage of some of the units if there's parking on site. But if, if there's a real practical difficulty and it doesn't work, then you can explain that to the Board as well.
We would glad to. May I respond to some of the items that were addressed by the first speaker?
Yes.
The, on the, on the issue, we talked about the notification issue. I explained that we, as soon as we knew, we did what we should do.
Okay, we've talked about the notification.
And I, we couldn't do it any faster. Now, on the issue of the fact that there'll be a park, a terrible parking disaster on Union Street, we, my client met with this speaker after this aborted partial public hearing on May twenty-second, and this gentleman voiced his concern to us, and our client had a traffic study and study report prepared, and part of my, part of my submission to the Community Board and to this Board, if you so desire, is that this traffic report shows that rather than exacerbating any alleged traffic problem, the traffic study shows that the traffic congestion is reduced by the fewer cars going in and out of the garage.
All right, this is a study that you've done?
Yes.
And you have provided this to the Community Board?
I haven't provided you with it, it was just received.
Okay, so if you can provide that to the Community Board as well as to the Board.
We certainly intend to.
Okay.
Now, on, on the issue of loading berth, et cetera, this gentleman at the, after the public hearing, and we had an extended lengthy conversation to hear them out and to respond as we, we felt we should to allay their concerns, answer their questions, that this gentleman felt that a seven thousand square foot retail establishment requires a loading berth, and he feels that they'll, that that will exacerbate the traffic. Well, I think rather his, his argument-
All right, why don't, I think, instead of going through all the issues here, this is going to be heard by the Community Board. If neighbors want to present something in writing to us, they can, and why don't you respond back in writing to us about why you believe that these, from a zoning perspective, is not required, or there are other reasons you don't believe it's practical?
It's not required, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Nowhere in any, in New York City, seven thousand square feet.
I, I understand that. All right, any other questions?
No.
Any more speakers on this item? Okay, we will continue the hearing, and, well, the Community Board's going to hear this on the twenty-sixth, and we want, we'd like to get that in writing, and any other comments. So if the neighbors want to put something in writing and submit to us, why don't they also submit to us by June twenty-sixth? And Mr. Minkin, you can respond back by July eighth, and we can continue the hearing on July twenty-second.
Could you let me have those dates again, Madam Chair?
May I get pardon?
Could you repeat the dates, please?
The dates?
Yeah.
July eighth is your submission date, and the hearing is on July twenty-second.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number 11, calendar number 2403BZ, 17802, Union Turnpike, Queens, Warshaw Bernstein.
Good morning. Josh Reinsmith for the applicant. This is an application to extend the term of a variance for an automotive service station on the south side of Union Turnpike in Fresh Meadows, Queens. From yesterday's review session, I understand that the board raised some issues and wanted some information clarified. We went to a committee meeting with Community Board Eight, and at that meeting, the residential property owner located behind the premises had mentioned that the last time that this matter was before the board, that the operator of the gas station had agreed to install several trees on that property owner's property. Those trees ended up dying. And so, at the meeting, we agreed that we would look into it and have agreed to install trees on the rear of our properties so that we can properly take care of them. And I have an updated site plan that can identify where we will plant those trees. In addition, I'd like to point out that it appears from the photographs that in addition to the masonry wall, there's a chain link fence on top of that that has privacy slats. So, that serves as a partial buffer. And then, there are trees on the other properties that are but our rear lot line that provide existing buffering and screening, and then we'll plant the ones on our side to essentially replace that buffer that vanished once those other trees died. And I can submit new photographs. I think the photographs that were taken were taken during the winter, and so, we'll submit new photographs showing the existing conditions.
All right. I know Commissioner Montanes and Commissioner Otley-Brown had commented on this. Any?
Oh, the, well, I'm glad you're going to install trees. The only other question I had was, I think you put a new shed in the back also?
Okay.
What is that used for?
I'm not certain of that. I wasn't able to get clarification in time for this hearing, but I'll do so for the next hearing.
Okay. Any other comments?
And my statement was just to echo what Commissioner Montanes said about installing the trees along the rear line, and also to state that while you were at it to replace the trees on the eastern lot line that are dying, they're brown.
All right. Any speakers on this item? Any speakers? Are you here to speak on this item?
No.
No. All right. She's listened. Then we can continue the hearing. How much time do you need?
Two weeks, I think, should be sufficient to do it.
Sorry. What was that?
Two weeks, I think, would be sufficient.
Okay. All right, so why don't you submit to us on July 1st, and we can have the hearing on July 15th?
Thank you very much.
Okay, 15th, yes.
Item number 12, calendar number 27107BZ, 215 West 23rd Street, Manhattan, Eric Palatnik.
Good morning. Todd Dale, on behalf of the Office of Eric Palatnik. From review session, I understand there were a few questions that were raised about the application. First, to clarify, there really is no change in program planned. It's primarily a change in operator. The previous tenant was at David Barton Gym, and the new tenant proposed as Crunch Fitness. Crunch intends to locate their weight equipment in the same exact arrangement that's already there. To that end, I know there was a question on the plans, one of the, on the mezzanine level, it says select yourized weights. As they were described to me, what those are is there's like mounted weight systems where they use a key to change the weight. So, it's just a brand or a type of weight that's going to be there. It's not actually a free weight situation. The free weights that are located in the site would be in the cellar, the lowest level, the same as they are now. And that actually provides a lot of separation from the closest residential use in the building. The third floor is where the first apartments are. Second floor of the facility is just locker rooms and offices, so there's no music, no activity there, and the free weights are kept down in the cellar. So, I know there's also a question about noise attenuation. There wasn't any plans to retrofit the existing building because there hadn't been complaints. They'll use their standard mats for weights and, you know, keeping the music at a reasonable level. I would also throw out that prior to the community board's full meeting on this, they actually visited the site, would represent it from Crunch, and they were satisfied with what Crunch presented.
Okay. Any questions? Any speakers on this item? All right, there are no speakers. We can close the hearing. And we can set a decision date for July 22nd.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Appeals, calendar, item number 13, 5113A, 10 Woodward Avenue, Queens, Carl Safaro.
Todd Dale, on behalf of Carl Safaro.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Item number 14, 5913A, 11-3143rd Place, Queens, Carl Safaro.
Todd Dale for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 15, 166-12A, 638 East 11th Street, Manhattan, and item number 16, 10713A, 638 East 11th Street, Manhattan.
Good morning. Ashley Hallen of Law Offices of Marvin B. Mitzner, the applicant of 10713-A. We request an adjournment to allow for additional time of the plans that have been submitted to D.O.A.
All right. I'll field, adjourn this till August. If you can provide us a letter on August 12th, just giving us a status of what's happening, and we can have the hearing on August 19th. If the issues are resolved, then probably you will be withdrawing the application.
Great, thank you.
Item number 17, 110-13A, 120 President Street, Brooklyn. Officer Abram Freinstein, Christian.
All right. Oh, he's here.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. We are meeting again with Department of Buildings on, this week, on the 20th, which we hope to get the final sign off on the plans, at which point we'll be withdrawing the application.
All right. Why don't we, we adjourn this hearing till August 12th? In the event that you resolve the issues, then you will be submitting us a letter of withdrawal.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Item number 18, 296-13A, 280 Bond Street, Brooklyn, the office of Jack Lester.
Good morning, Commissioners, for the appellant, Jack Lester. I have some handouts, which I'd like to give to the board. The first handout is a letter of support from Assemblyperson Joan Millman, and a letter of support from State Senator Vellumet Montgomery. The second handout is a chart summary. I understand that this may be the last hearing, and what we wanted to do in chart form is summarize what we believe is the evidence or the record to date. Now, certainly, I could put this in as an attachment to the next submission, but I think it may help the board in terms of following our presentation today. So, those are the two handouts. I think at this juncture, the record must be looked at in the context of the statute, 52-61 of the zoning resolution. The statute was created because public policy favors elimination of non-conforming uses. And the reason that public policy favors the discontinuance is because it's, has a negative influence on the zoning scheme. The legislature passes a law, creates zoning, and they understand that when the law is passed, there may be certain uses in existence that run contrary to the zoning. So, 52-61 was created so as not to take away someone's pre-existing use. However, it was not meant to allow unfettered continuation of uses that were no longer active. And that's why the statute specifically says that continuation is allowed only if active continuation is not discontinued, substantially all not continued. So, there are two phrases that are key, I think, to understand the evidence in this case, the word "active" and "substantially all." So, the statute does not call for complete cessation. And that was the issue we had that went up to the Court of Appeals, because the State Supreme Court and the appellate division said that as long as someone had an intent to continue their business, in other words, the business could be failing, they could be losing their business, and as long as the owner had a good faith intent to continue, we're going to allow it to continue, because, you know, you can't control the fate of the economy. That's what the State Supreme Court said and the appellate division said. The Court of Appeals said, no. Good faith and intent have nothing to do with it, nothing to do with the statute. In fact, the Court of Appeals went back and looked at the legislative intent, and there's a footnote in the Court of Appeals' decision which talks about the city planning commission's report to the city council, which said, "We're not concerned about good faith. We're not concerned about intent. You must show active operation in order to allow a non-conform use to continue." That's right in the Court of Appeals' decision. It's a footnote, they cite the report. And I remember, there was a lot of research done during that case to uncover that report, and we actually retained Norman Marcus, who prepared that report. And he was the one who argued ultimately at the Court of Appeals. So, I think we have to look at the case in that context. And the Court of Appeals says, "Allowing the slightest non-conforming function to preserve the non-conforming use would eliminate the specific language requiring 'active' to avoid termination." And I know yesterday at the executive session, there was discussion about the empirical evidence. And I would ask this board to take another look at that empirical evidence, because there is nothing in the empirical evidence which shows one transaction. Not one trans, there's no receipt, there's no evidence that any goods were bought or sold, there's no exchange with a customer, there's nothing, and the chair had indicated this in the prior hearing, show us some evidence of a legitimate, typical business of this nature that shows there was business. And there's nothing. Even the tax returns. The tax returns are, I think, that's the crucial issue to show if there's any use that was passive. The tax return for the year 2010 shows a loss, shows no business. And even if this is a warehouse, I mean, a warehouse, you can't continue the, the non-conforming use in a warehouse if you have a bunch of pipes or items lying around, and someone goes in and turns off the light, turns on the light a few times, or makes a few phone calls. That's not what the standard is. And even if it's a warehouse, a warehouse does business, where is that business? And I think all of that then has to be looked at in the context of the two sworn statements we have, where the proprietor had no reason to fabricate or lie about the fact that he had no business. In two separate occasions, under oath, he said he had no business, conducted no business for the last three years. And that comports with the empirical evidence. He could have no business and send someone in to, to keep the heat on or the water running, and we show in that chart that it's very minimal utility usage. The fact that he had insurance, again, passive use. The fact that he maintained insurance doesn't show that he carried on any business. But you take those two sworn statements, one to the district attorney's office, where he said he had no business, no assets, another in a deposition under oath, where he said for the prior three years, he had no business. Is there anything in the record which is a sworn statement that would contradict that? And I think you have to look at, I spoke about this at an earlier hearing, that judges regularly charge juries on this issue, where a witness lies. And the ju, a judge would charge a jury that if a witness willfully provided false testimony as to any material fact, the entire testimony may be disregarded. The principle is that a person who knowingly and intentionally would swear falsely about one important and vital matter may very well do so about everything. Judges always charge this to a jury where you have a provable lie, which we have in this case, because you can't reconcile the two issues. Either he's doing business or he's not doing business. They're not reconcilable. One version or the other must be accepted. And we've asked, we asked the board, well, allow Mr. Osakowitz himself to reconcile the contradiction, issue a subpoena. It came back, well, he's not able to testify. Whether he's able to testify or not, I mean, that's beyond my ability to know. But there are other witnesses who aren't in a position to know. We offered the general contractor, Mr. Conklin. The crucial period between 2010 and 2012 is what's at issue. The Department of Buildings was impressed by the fact that there were permits to that job in Far Rockaway. There's no evidence connecting those jobs to 280 Bond Street, but assuming, for argument's sake, we wanted to accept that that was the case, the general contractor, Mr. Conklin, could testify as to where the materials came. Did they come from the 280 Bond Street location, or did they come from someplace else? Did this individual, Mr. Osakowitz, have conversations with Mr. Conklin? Were there witnesses on site, were there employees on site who could add to the record on this? None of that exists in this hearing. And there is another principle about missing witnesses. If a witness is, is under the control of a party and has a relevant and material position or fact to offer, and that witness is not produced, jurors are entitled, fact finders are entitled, to draw an inference that that testimony would be directly opposed to their position at trial or in this hearing. Another point is that in Mr. Lobel's submission, he indicates that in Toys R Us, in the Toys R Us case, there was real definitive evidence of no use. We had, there were two witnesses who testified with direct knowledge, who were impartial witnesses. One was a representative of Chase Manhattan Bank, and another was from an environmental concern that had been brought in to examine the property. And until those two witnesses testified, you had conflicting evid, I mean, it was similar to this here. You had conflicting evidence. On the one hand, the community testified based on their observations, and that's all the community could offer. They could only offer their observation. They don't have access to records, they don't have subpoena power, they don't have the ability to conduct discovery, so all they could offer is their observations. And I have to take issue with the Department of Building placing that category of evidence as the worst category. It's the only category of evidence that community members could produce, is what they see, what they observe. We have neighbors who've lived there for 10 years or more, right on the site, right there, seeing on a day-to-day basis what goes on. So, there is no reason for this body to reject that testimony or to undermine that testimony, because unlike Mr. Osakowitz's testimony, which is totally incredible, which has been proven to be a lie, there is nothing to undermine the eyewitness accounts of the neighbors. But assuming one did not want to accept that testimony, assuming one wants to go along with what the Department of Buildings has said, that's a D. We give that a D, which I find offensive. You give an eyewitness account a D when there's no basis to undermine that testimony? But anyway, let's accept that that's a D. But we've asked this board to subpoena witnesses, because in the Toys R Us case, the witness who testified from Chase Manhattan Bank did so under subpoena. The witness who came forward from the environmental concern did so under subpoena. And until those witnesses testified, there was no way to judge credibility, there was no way to make a determination of factual disputes, there was no way to decide that case. And I think the board set a very excellent precedent in that case, one that the Court of Appeals recognized. And it's really the most significant case on record in this issue. And it was solved through the issuance of the subpoena. And it was solved through the issuance of the subpoena. And we requested that in the first hearing. I requested that in writing, I think, on more than one occasion. I renew that request again today. I think it will solve this problem if we can have Mr. Conklin, the general contractor, come in. Because he's the person with the best, most precise knowledge of what went on in that 2010 to 2012 period. The other issue I wanted to address is the change of the use. The position of Mr. Lobell, his client, is, "Well, if you don't want to accept that we had a plumbing supply business or storage, what the certificate of occupancy indicates, then we have something else for you. We rented out vehicles to Eastern Effects." And Department of Buildings recognized that that's not a lawful business at that location. We point that out. But I don't think that's the crucial-- whether it's lawful or not for that location, whether it's authorized under the C of O or not is not the issue. And it's not the point I was trying to make, and perhaps I could clarify it more today. If you look at the Steiner decision, Court of Appeals' decision, 1997, 90 New York Second, 453, the Court of Appeals addressed this issue precisely. The Court of Appeals says, "In order for a non-conforming use to be the basis to continue in derogation of zoning, the use must be pre-existing." So in other words, and it goes back to what we were saying at the outset, the statutory intent, the legislative intent, is not to take someone's business away if it's active. But it doesn't give that person license to create a new business, but to create a different business that didn't exist before the zoning. It has to be a pre-existing lawful use. So these renting out vehicles or other uses that is being claimed to extend this non-conforming use, they were not pre-existing uses. And therefore, it should not count to extend the right to have this business operate in derogation of zoning. So I think those are the basic points in summary. I didn't go through all the evidence specifically at the threat of boarding, you know, the fact that there's no this, no, it's all in that chart, in that summary. I believe we have our private investigator here, Mr. Frank Napoli, who's done a great deal of work in this, in terms of helping us produce the evidence. And I would like him to say a few words. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record, please.
Frank Napoli. Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm a private investigator. I've worked in this capacity for 12 years. Before that, I was a special agent with the United States Treasury Department for 30 years. What I'd like to do is summarize some of the evidence I've gathered in connection with this matter, as well as comment on some of the documents that were submitted to the board in connection with this matter. But particularly focus on the years 2009 and 2010, as it relates to business activities, particularly, specifically plumbing activity at 280 Bond Street. I'd like to go draw your attention to the building permits, Department of Building permits issued in 2009. There were 10 permits issued to Alvin Isakowitz doing business as excellence in plumbing. These 10 permits all related to the Rockaway project, the shorefront project. They were all issued within a seven-day period in January of 2009. No permits were issued after January 14, 2009, to Mr. Isakowitz. Now during that period, I had an opportunity during this investigation, an opportunity to interview Seth Nahoon, who was Mr. Isakowitz's foreman on the Rockaway project. What Mr. Nahoon said to me was that all the building supplies, all the plumbing supplies in connection with the project were delivered directly to the site. In addition, Mr. Nahoon said that prior to, during the period 2005 through the end of 2008, they were turning out of 280 Bond Street, meaning he and other employees were forming up at 280 Bond Street, driving the trucks from 280 Bond to the site, the Rockaway site, and returning in the evening. He said that discontinued at the end of 2008. At that point, they parked all the trucks, and the employees, as well as he himself, proceeded directly to the site from their residence. They parked the trucks, so they were not showing up at 280 Bond Street. That ceased to be their center of activity, business activity stopped there in 2008.
For this particular job, correct?
Excuse me?
But your investigation is only about this particular job?
In connection with 280 Bond Street. And I'm going to go into other documents that I feel that support this in 2009. Mr. Nahoon said that the only thing that Mr. Isakowitz did was he would show up at the job, and he was not performing any plumbing work, he would meet with the inspectors.
Did Mr. Nahoon give an affidavit to you, or?
No, I interviewed him, and he furnished an affidavit, I believe, which was somewhat inconsistent with my interview with him. You'd have to look at that, and you could always call him in to clarify some of these points. But I think his affidavit was vague as to the amount of activity at 280 Bond Street. I think he led, his affidavit was kind of open-ended, it made it appear that they were continuing activity throughout the whole project. Remember, the work permits were all issued to Mr. Isakowitz in relation to the Rockaway project. So that was his primary source of income. Let me talk about Robert Conklin. But Robert Conklin said, Robert Conklin said that at no time did he ever see, remember Mr. Isakowitz or Mr. Isakowitz's trucks bringing plumbing supplies to the project. The plumbing supplies were always delivered directly by the suppliers, and he mentioned several of the plumbing suppliers. He said the last, he said he had a conversation with Mr. Isakowitz, because I had asked him, "Were you ever at Mr. Isakowitz's warehouse in Brooklyn?" And he said, "I wasn't, I never was at the warehouse, but I had a conversation with Mr. Isakowitz about the warehouse." And he said, "Mr. Isakowitz told him that the warehouse belonged to his wife, was owned by his wife, and that it was vacant." And this was in connection with a conversation about Mr. Isakowitz storing his race cars, his drag race cars, at the 280 Bond Street warehouse. Also, Mr. Conklin's last check to Mr. Isakowitz was a check to Mr. Isakowitz's firm, as well as Seth Nahoon's firm. I believe that check, the last check issued, was 7/30/2009. So that's the last check that was issued, and it was issued to both their corporations. Mr. Conklin said that he wanted Mr. Isakowitz off the job. He had problems with Mr. Isakowitz, as well as the developer of the project. Mr. Isakowitz had issues with paying his employees. Now, there was also this financial affidavit that I looked at, that Mr. Isakowitz submitted to the Manhattan DA's office. That affidavit stated that he had not had any income two years prior to the signing of that affidavit, which was March 2, 2011. Additionally, his federal tax returns showed that he had gross income of $42,000, but he had purchased no building supplies, no plumbing supplies during that period. Now, what I'd like to just impart is one quick point about the significance of the Manhattan DA's office and federal tax returns. Mr. Isakowitz had been investigated by the Manhattan DA for tax evasion. The grand jury ultimately handed up indictment against Mr. Isakowitz, charging him with six counts of filing a false instrument. Three of those counts related to New York State personal income tax returns, the other three related to unincorporated tax returns for the years 2005, 2006, and 2007. Mr. Isakowitz structured a deal where he would receive five years probation, he'd plead guilty to one felony count, receive five years probation, and serve weekends in a halfway house for a six-month period. Furnishing a fraudulent affidavit would have undermined that deal, and if the information contained in that affidavit was found to be perjurious, he could be charged, and his probation could be violated. In other words, he could go back to prison or be sentenced to prison for a period of five years. So when he makes a statement to the DA in that financial application that he had no income from two years prior to that, you have to understand, this is pretty much on the money. The same way with his federal tax returns. After you've been indicted on state charges, these tax returns in 2009 and 2010 are very significant. He's not going to, he's not going to deviate, he's not going to take that chance and box himself in again. Now, in 2010, I want to sum this up quickly. You have the same issues with Conklin and with Seth Nahoon. No activity out of 280 Bond Street. The trucks were parked, the plumbing supplies were delivered. Mr. Isakowitz, according to Conklin, was off the site, and Mr. Nahoon, his foreman, was finishing up the job. In 2010, his tax records, not only does he show no reported gross, no reported gross receipts, he doesn't show any cost for labor, other than any labor cost, and he doesn't show the purchase of any plumbing supplies. So in 2009 and 2010, we have no plumbing supplies that were purchased. Additionally, he actually showed a loss of that year. He spent seven, in excess of $7,500 for insurance that did not relate to the business, that related to the property. The last person I spoke to was Phil Warren, who was with Eastern Effects. And Mr. Warren parked vehicles, his company's vehicles, on a daily basis at 280 Bond Street from 2010 to 2012. And he was, he was there pretty much on a daily basis in the morning, all during the day, bringing trucks back and taking them out. He said at no point did he ever recall seeing any of Mr. Isakowitz's trucks being removed from that premises during the period that Eastern Effects was parking their vehicles there. Additionally, he said, "In addition to the trucks, he never saw any plumbing supplies being delivered to the warehouse." And that's my summary in short. Thank you.
All right. And so, most of what you've said today is based on interviews that you've held with various people?
Yes, and the review of tax records and the district attorneys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other point, if I may, on the issue of credibility. We spoke, I spoke previously about the ability to discount all of the evidence for someone who you believe is not being truthful. So it's not just canceling out the affidavit that Mr. Isakowitz submitted to the board, that obviously that should be canceled out. But it's all the other evidence that flows from his credibility. For example, there's a, there was a whole exhibit attached to Mr. Lobell's submission about cash payments. Now, we have to accept, based on their position, that somehow these cash transactions had to do with running the business. The only way that could be supported would be through the testimony or the credibility of Mr. Isakowitz. Similarly, with all the other empirical evidence of passive use, insurance, utilities, all these other items are only connected to the business on the bridge of Mr. Isakowitz's credibility. Thank you. Do we have other speakers?
Are there speakers on this item?
Yes, we have two more.
Please come forward.
Or at least three.
Okay. You'll be given three minutes each.
Thank you very much. My name is Katia Justin. I'm a neighbor. I spoke at the last hearing. I just wanted to, I understand the board's placement of affidavits or eyewitness accounts that aren't presented to you by a person being here physically present. So I would just implore the board to please issue subpoenas in this case. We would love to hear from Mr. Isakowitz, we'd love to hear from others who, on whose credibility really, at the end of the day, if these permits are allowed to stand, the board will be relying on. Because if you look carefully at these timelines that we've submitted, there is no documentation that supports a continued use of these premises for 2010 through 2012. There's none. There are no tax records, there are no payments to employees, there are no records supporting that there were jobs. There really is nothing. It is all affidavits or hearsay. That's all you have. On their side, that's all you have. There has to be records. It makes no sense. Instead, we've presented records that show that there was nothing at the site. We have the tax records themselves submitted by the owner, where there's no business income, no business expenses. That supports our position. We've submitted a certified letter that got returned because there was no one there. We've submitted the affidavit of an eyewitness who actually went into the site to fix a wall and said there was nothing there. That is concrete substantive evidence. And I just ask that the board look at this carefully. We've spent a lot of time on this. We all have jobs and children. We spend a lot of time on this because this issue is so critical to us, it is so critical to our block, it is so critical to the west side of Bond Street, which is residential, which the zoning is residential, and my understanding of the policy is that non-conforming uses are disfavored. And I just ask that you see who's here, all of these people with jobs. If you could stand up, these are the people whose lives this will directly impact. And we're not asking that you decide on emotion or preference, but please, please look at the records carefully, and please understand that there is no evidence to support their position. There's no credible evidence at all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker?
Hi. My name's Heidi Dolnick, and I live behind the property. I abut the property. Our backyard ends at the building. And I have two daughters, a three-year-old and a one-year-old. The consideration of empirical evidence to the exclusion of everything else has been deeply dismaying to me. I believe the empirical evidence does show inactivity at the property for well over a two-year period. When I learned of the zoning rule regarding discontinued use for non-conforming uses, I knew everything would be fine, because I thought the right thing will be done, and because literally everyone knows that that building has been idle for as long as anyone can remember. It's as plain as day. I was also comforted in knowing that the people who wrote the rules back when they were first written understood the logic behind allowing a non-residential use in a residential zone. Active businesses couldn't be shut down at the time the residential zoning was established. Simple, great. But those rulemakers had the foresight to provide an out. They knew that residential zones are just that. They're homes. They are homes with families, they're homes with children who need to study, children who need to sleep, children who really need to be protected from a 21 and over live music venue. That's literally in their backyards, or in some cases, sharing a wall with the building. So I implore you to judge this case based not only on empirical evidence, but also on the spirit and the intent of the rule, and to also please take all information that's being given to you into consideration. The plain and simple truth is this, there should be no non-residential use on the west side of Bond Street barring the legitimate needs of a legitimate business that has been legitimately continuously active. So before you now, I think, is a textbook case that the experts had in mind when they wrote the rule on discontinuous use, and it really couldn't be more obvious to anyone who visits the site, our side of Bond is residential. 280 Bond should be once and for all residential also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'll try to keep this short. I've probably lived--
Please state your name for the record, please.
Carla Helds. I'm at 453 Sackett Street. I'm around the corner from 280 Bond. My backyard sees it, and obviously would be able to hear it. I've lived there probably longer than most of my neighbors. I bought my house there in 1996. By about 1998 or 1999, I bought a car. As we know, the neighborhood has become more popular, more people have cars. With that in mind, in alternate side of the street parking regulations, we used to have to move the car four times a week. Due to that, I'd work from home a lot. And working from home in the middle of the day, moving my car with the block becoming more crowded and more cars, I've often had to either drive past or park on Bond Street. And I can attest, I have not seen any kind of activity there in the middle of the day. They may say that the neighbors are out during the day and would not have noticed, but I've been there day after day, and have not seen any kind of commercial activity.
Thank you. The next speaker?
Hello. My name is Michael Reed. I live on DeGrasse Street, two houses down from 280 Bond Street. We bought our house in 1999. I have two kids, who are now 18 and 14. I have two kids, who are now 18 and 14. And they went to the children's school, which is on Carroll Street. I would take them. I work from home, like Carla. I would take them every morning, walk in front of 280 Bond Street to the children's school to drop them off at 8:00 in the morning. And I would walk by, pick them up at 3:00 in the afternoon. And there was never any activity there. This went on for, since they were in pre-kindergarten until the second one, you know, was out of fifth grade, you know? So during all that period, we saw nothing. And--
What were the years? What was the timeframe you're talking about when you were taking your children to school?
Well, 2004 through 2010.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, that's just, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker?
Hi. My name is Brenda Bello, and I live at 474 DeGraw, two houses away. And I'm an architect. I just wanted to go back to the issue of the use and of the main business of this property, which has been a plumbing business. It's been characterized as a warehouse, which seems like a very passive use. But a plumbing dispatch is not as passive. And according to the affidavit submitted by the owner, they were there every day, seven to 10 employees a day. That's what they said. A plumbing dispatch is a very noisy operation. And I've lived there since 2009, and I don't recall activity at the site whatsoever except for the Eastern Effects trucks coming in and out after 2010. That chart will explain our analysis of all the utility bills that they've submitted, mostly from 2009. And that, the usage shown supports and what's reflected in the taxes, which is minimal income and no expenses. A business that was in decline after 2008. The office in that building is in accessory use to the main use. And for the owner to have kept an office there after they turned over a lease signifies to me a lack of, a discontinuance of the main use. An accessory use doesn't exist unless it serves a main use. And I think the loading dock was also an accessory use to this business. So those uses should be discounted from a continuation of business, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker?
My name is Kit Rowan, and I'm also a resident. I just want to clarify that one thing Frank Napoli talked about when he was speaking about the other permits and why he was focused on the Rockaway job. That's because the Rockaway job is Isaacowitz's job. I mean, that was the only job that Excellence in Plumbing had during that period, except for, I think, one minor one, maybe 2008. So that's why Coughlin and all of these people were interviewed, and that's why he spoke of that. There was no, there's DOB permits if that's the basis for a continuing use. That's the only job. The only thing I wanted to point out is, you know, we've asked for Isaacowitz to speak. And we'd love for him to come here and speak. The, his attorney has said that he's unable to come here and speak. And I just want to enter into evidence the fact that he's ambulatory and that he can walk, and that if maybe he's outside, it would be very good for him to come and speak under oath. And that would clarify these issues. So I'd like to enter this into evidence, and I'd like an adverse, inference to be drawn from it.
Thank you.
All right. I can give you other copies and also--
Any questions or--
Could you just describe with greater clarity what this photograph is that you're giving to us?
Sure.
And who took it, and when, and where?
This is him from, I think, the ninth of last month, around 4:00 in the morning, coming out of his, or going into the dialysis center where he goes for dialysis, I think, two or three times a week. And we had a private investigator shoot a video of him going in once I figured out where he was going.
Thank you.
We have others as well.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right. We'll take testimony from the Buildings Department, and then our platform, Mr. Lovell.
Good morning. Lisa O'Rantia for the Buildings Department. We have reviewed all of the evidence that both sides have submitted in this case. And the latest submission from the department focused on the years 2010 to 2012, which is what we understood the board was paying particular attention to, asking about at the last hearing. Included in the evidence that both sides have submitted are these records of testimony, affidavits. And I just wanted to repeat that the department's position is that these, this testimony is useful to explain or substantiate documents that are submitted to the department. But as standalone pieces of evidence, they're given very little value. And this is because these statements can be influenced by bias. And for that reason, the department gave little weight to these statements coming from both sides in this case. So when we looked at the documents submitted, first, we looked at what the challenger sends to the department. And then we looked to see what the response is from the challenged party, to see if they can rebut the claims. And we found that that is, once again, what has happened in this latest round of submissions. The appellant points out that there were no tax records after 2010 indicating plumbing business. The fact that sandborne maps are not provided since 2007, and no paychecks or money orders issued for the plumbing company and employees from 2009 to 2013. And in our submission, we do address all those pieces of evidence. And again, we looked at the owner's response and found that it was sufficient to rebut the claim of discontinuance. We looked at the owner's evidence of lease for the rental of storage trailers, their work permits, insurance policies, utility bills, telephone directory listings. And we found that that was sufficient to show that the nonconforming use had not been discontinued. So I think that the submission goes into all the details of what, for why we gave weight to certain pieces of evidence and why we discounted other pieces, and sets forth the standard for review. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah. In performing its analysis of the evidence, does the Buildings Department draw any inferences with regard to the credibility or veracity of the source of the evidence?
You know, that's not really where our expertise lies.
I'm just asking if you do it.
Yeah, we do not. We do not do that. And I think for good reason. We focus on the documentary evidence, and this follows our PPN from 1988. That really shows the priority of evidence, pro per value.
Okay. And just going back to the absence of employee records or what would be normal, everyday, run-of-the-mill business records, and the absence in those categories, business records, employee records. Did you say that the Buildings Department thought that the owner sufficiently rebutted the appellant's position with regard to that?
Well, the employee records, so no paychecks or money orders for the plumbing company or employees from 2009 to 2013. So what we do for that date range is look to see what was submitted. And that's where we find that the insurance policies that list Excellence in Plumbing operating at that location during that time period was providing enough evidence for business activity. It didn't exactly--
Wait. You just, you just went from no payments to employees to--
Right.
Insurance.
You don't find a mirror image of the owner coming back and saying, no, here are, here are my, here's proof of payment to employees. But they do provide evidence of business activity. It's a different type of evidence. But it doesn't directly mirror--
Right.
But it was sufficient, in our view.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Just a quick question. Does the department look at level of activity? A lot has been said about, you know, comings and goings or lack thereof. Does the department ever look beyond sort of paper documents and see if there is a certain level of activity? Or does the department merely rely on the, sort of, the just paper documentation of whatever they get and doesn't really consider, you know, how many people, you know, are on the site at any particular time or not?
We would normally look at level of activity because I think that is, it's important. It's something that was mentioned in the Toys R Us case, so that it was the determining factor in that case to see, you know, over where it was 20 months of complete discontinuance. And the question was, was this limited storage use sufficient to provide enough activity at the site? But I think in this case, it doesn't, it doesn't really come close to that Toys R Us case where we have, where it's a question of level of activity. It seems to be that we have proof of activity that it doesn't really raise the issue of how active they needed to be there. We have evidence that they were there, and we don't have anything showing that nothing at all went on, similar to that Toys R Us case.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Lovell?
The Toys R Us case sets forth that standard as far as what evidence is really required to present a case for nonconforming use. And the following is considered standard evidence. Quote, "insurance records, tax documents, advertisements, liability coverage, customer records, employee records, certain directory listings, telephone records, or sales receipts." Mr. Lester has asked for much of this evidence himself. We have now submitted to the board, literally thousands of pages of evidence, supporting our case here, including seven types of evidence that are cited by Toys R Us in the case by the Court of Appeals. This documentation firmly establishes that there was a nonconforming use at the site that continued. It is documentary evidence. While Mr. Lester may claim that typifying affidavits as category D evidence is quote-unquote "offensive," the truth is that there is a reason why the TPPN in 1988 set forth these categories. And the reason is because they're not biased, and they don't involve interests. And what they involve is black and white facts about what went on at a property. We have submitted a chart to the board. And I would add that the chart submitted by the opposition, we have not had an opportunity to see that. We have not had an opportunity to see the written documentation any state they've submitted, photographs, et cetera. But beyond that, the chart we have submitted to the board, which dates back to 2001, has approximately 65 discreet pieces of evidence dating between 2010 to 2012. Of those 65 pieces of evidence, approximately 27 are Class C evidence, three are Class B evidence, and 16 are Class A evidence, which is indicative of the most powerful evidence of a nonconforming use at the site. While Mr. Lester makes much of the fact that we had people here, and they were watching, and this is their testimony, the truth of the matter is that the cases, as well as BSA precedent, has set forth that you can provide documents. You can provide evidence that shows beyond testimony and witness testimony, Department of Finance, Department of Building records, inspection records, and all of this, which can document the lack of a nonconforming use. They have failed to do any of this. The other side asks the board to weigh the totality of the evidence in this case. Weighing the totality of the evidence in this case makes it clear that the opposition here is insufficient as far as what they're trying to prove. There is a question as far as level of activity. The truth is that the Court of Appeals didn't address level of activity in Toys R Us. And if you have a 38,000-square-foot warehouse with 1,500 customer accounts, as was the case in Toys R Us, you are, quite frankly, going to find a very different level of activity than an 8,500-square-foot lot used for quote-unquote "loading and storage of boiler equipment, non-storage garage for motor trucks." I would give little weight to testimony with regards to the intensity of the use, that a plumbing supply business is going to have an intense level of activity. No. The facts here support that there was insurance payments. There are electricity records. There are phone records. There are, there are documents which support that there was an active business operation here. Mr. Napoli, the private investigator for the other sides, comes up and gives an extensive history of hearsay evidence to this board, providing no documentation whatsoever. Not only should this evidence be discounted by the board as representing, A, the worst type of evidence, this evidence doesn't even fall into category D evidence, a sworn statement or testimony. This is their private investigator poking around and trying to get evidence testimony, attempting to have affidavits signed by, for example, Lawrence Baumann, our accountant, who refused to even sign the affidavit because of what it set forth. So that, they can't even provide the affidavit supporting this hearsay testimony. We ask that the entirety of this testimony be stricken from the record. Moreover, many of the statements that they make, if you choose to give any credence, support the fact that there was a commercial use here. He discusses Eastern Effects and discusses the fact that there was this constant coming and going of trucks in this regard. And it basically supports our case, that there was commercial activity at the site. I understand that the neighbors feel that this is a residential block. But 5261 discusses discontinuation of a nonconforming use. There is no character finding in 5261. This is not a discussion of whether or not this should be quote-unquote "residential" on our side of Bond Street. We deal with the zoning resolution. We deal with Department of Building regulations. The zoning resolution here and Department of Building regulations here support the fact that on pages and pages and pages and thousands of pages of testimony in a color-coded chart that was submitted to the board on the appropriate deadline, we have mounds of evidence supporting commercial use at the site. They have provided no countervailing evidence to the contrary, which, if you're looking at the totality of the record, weighs against this evidence. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lovell? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, I'd like to reply briefly to a number of statements. First, we, the point I was making about eyewitness testimony is not to extol that testimony or give it more weight than any other factor. But what I'm saying is, there is no rational basis. It would be certainly arbitrary and capricious to discount eyewitness testimony when there's no basis to discount it. And I understand that it's level D. But there has been no showing to undermine the credibility of any witness. So the DOB could have a policy saying, well, we feel that's less significant than other evidence, which may be. But if you look at a long line of conceptual issues under jurisprudence, the, there's eyewitness testimony. A juror would never be told, when you evaluate the evidence, give less weight to eyewitness testimony, whether or not there's a basis to believe the witness is lying. The DOB is saying in a generalized fashion, well, it could be biased. Well, certainly, anything could be biased. Documents could be biased. You know, accountants say, you know, even journals and charts could be biased because they're produced by people. So that, all I'm making, the only point I'm making there is there is no reason to give that lesser value without some articulation as to why those people may not be telling the truth. The other point I'm making, the private investigator, we produced him, not so much for the, for the, what he had to say, the substance, but to lay a foundation for the need for this body to subpoena witnesses who do have germane and relevant information. I think he laid a good foundation for that. Because the point we're making is, one of the issues that hangs over this case is the fact that there are missing witnesses. And these missing witnesses are under the control or maybe under the control of the owner. And there is, unlike the DOB chart A through D, there is a concept in the law which addresses the missing witness charge. And the missing witness charge states or derives from the common sense notion that the non-production of evidence that would naturally have been produced by an honest and therefore fearless claimant permits the inference that its tenor is unfavorable to the party's cause. That's where the inference comes from. So the-- So the private investigator did his investigation and presents an offer of proof to this board as to why certain evidence is relevant, material, and should be subpoenaed.
Thank you. Do you want to speak again?
Just one quick comment. I want to rebut Mr. Lebel's-
Very quickly.
Very quickly.
Please restate your name for the-
It's Frank Napoli. Mr. Lebel characterized this, my conversation with what had occurred with the accountant, Mr. Baumann. I interviewed Mr. Baumann because Mr. Isaacowitz said his financial records were unavailable and the accountant did not retain the records and the accountant normally destroys the records. I reached out and I spoke with Mr. Baumann. Mr. Baumann said he had copies of all the tax records. And he never tells his clients to destroy their records after four years. He tells them to retain the records for at least four years because there's a statutory issue. I spoke to Mr. Baumann and I said, I'd like you to sign an affidavit. We prepared a four, a four-sentence affidavit, basically saying that he never told his, his client to destroy records, that he doesn't do this as a matter of course. Mr. Baumann said, after speaking to him, I read the affidavit to him. He said, I have no problem signing the affidavit. Please send it to me. I emailed it to me, to him. I had not heard back from him. His secretary responded in an email that after speaking with the counsel, Mr. Lebel, he was directed not to sign the affidavit. So that's a complete mischaracterization of what Mr. Lo, Mr. Lebel represented. I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Yes, wait, Mr. Lebel, and then we're going to move on from there.
Mr. Baumann called me frantically discussing the fact that he had received a call, but more importantly than that, I refuse to accept that Mr. Baumann's testimony to Mr. Napoli about what Mr. Lebel said to Mr. Baumann can be given any credence as far as, as far as meaningful evidence before this board. Moreover, I think Mr. Lester misstates the standards before the Board of Standards and Appeals about whether or not subpoenas should issue. The, the question here as far as BSA, and this was briefed in letters and papers before the board outside of this forum, in letters to the board, including a letter we submitted on May 9, 2014, is whether or not the testimony is, A, unduly burdensome, and B, is overly, is the subpoena request is overly broad. We feel that the literally thousands of pages of documentary evidence submitted in this case sufficiently establish the record without a need for a subpoena of anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lebel. Are there any questions for any of the parties, for the commissioners?
No.
All right. What I'd like to do is, I think we've got most of the information in the record. I think they're just, parties want to respond to some new information that has been put in the record today, so we'll allow the parties to do that. Mr. Lester, did you, had, did you have a chance to respond to DOB's papers as yet?
No, I have not.
So why don't you respond to both the DOB's papers? You've provided us with a chart today that you, I don't know if you want to summarize it.
I will include that, yes.
All right. So if you can submit that to us in two weeks.
Okay.
So that's July 1. And the Buildings Department and Mr. Lebel would have an opportunity to respond back on July, so we said July, what was the date I gave you?
July 1.
July 1, okay. On July 15. And Mr. Lester, you can respond back on July 29, and we can vote this out on August 12.
Thank you.
And the board, I thank all of the parties who've come here on several occasions and giving us your input, and the board will consider all the information that's in the record.
I appreciate your time.
The decision date, can I?
Is August 12.
August 12, thank you.
Make a motion to close.
Chair Shunivassan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Item number 19, calendar number 8914A, 215 East 64th Street, Manhattan, Kramer, Levin, Nifatalis and Frankel.
The applicant has asked for this to be adjourned, and we will have the hearing on August 12.
Thirty, postponed for approximately 30 days.
Oh, okay. So we could have this on July 29.
Item number 20, calendar number 10314A, 55 Eckford Street, Brooklyn, Anchorman Centifit.
Good afternoon, almost afternoon. Madam Chair, President and Commissioners, we attended the board's executive session and we understand that the board was seeking clarification on a few of the different computations as well as certain areas of non-compliance. Rather than take up the board's time, because I see that you've had a very long hearing, we'd like to respond to those in writing to provide the board the clarification requested.
That seems fine. Any questions for the applicant right now? Okay, so you're going to respond back in writing about the discrepancy, I think one was 2.2 million versus 2.7, and the other issue had to do with a serious loss?
Right, because you said that it was only the building height and the FAR that became non-compliant. So then I wanted to know, you know, are the, is the, the building that's there now, is that, okay, is that compliant?
Okay.
Can it be retrofitted or can it be reduced in height to something to meet the FAR and the height requirements?
Okay.
All right. Are there any speakers on this item? Any speakers? Mrs. Sinicori, how much time do you need to get back to this?
Do it in a week. So-
How about if we?
If, well, I was going to say if it's possible to close the hearing and leave it open.
But both, both questions haven't been answered at all, so I think we're not going to close the hearing. So why don't you submit to us on July 1, and we can continue the hearing on July, on July 15.
Zoning calendar, decision items, item number 21, calendar number 5412BZ, 65-39102 Street, Queen, Gerald J. Caliendo.
Good afternoon, Sandy Anagnostu.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 22, calendar number 21112BZ, 164 Cafe Street, Brooklyn, Rothberg, Rothberg Inspector.
We'll defer the decision to August 12.
Item number 23, calendar number 26312BZ, 232 and 222 City Island Avenue, Zabron, Sheldon Lebel.
Jordan Most from Sheldon Lebel.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number 24, calendar number 34712BZ, 42-31 Union Street, Queen, the office of Vincent El Petra.
Good afternoon, Mitchell Ross.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number 25, calendar number 10313BZ, 81 Jefferson Street, Brooklyn, Rothberg, Rothberg Inspector.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Item number 26, calendar number 21313BZ, 3858 through 60 Victory Boulevard, Staten Island, Rothberg, Rothberg Inspector.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Item number 27, calendar number 27313BZ, 321 East 60th Street, Manhattan, Anchorman Centifit.
Good afternoon, Chair President and Commissioners.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 28, calendar number 28913BZ, 473 through 541 Sixth Avenue, Brooklyn, Kramer, Levin, Nifatalis and Frankel.
Good afternoon, Elise Wagner for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 29, calendar number 32613BZ, 16-16, Whitestone Expressway, Queens, Rothberg, Rothberg Inspector.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
Continued hearings, item number 30, calendar number 21013BZ, 43-1250th Street, Queen, Sheldon Lebel.
Jordan Most from Sheldon Lebel on behalf of the applicant.
Oh, maybe we had a few questions. Just Commissioner Montanez?
Well, I think you said you removed the awning sign and you're going to remove the structure. Could you just give us-
We will do that. We'll take a, yeah, I'm waiting. In fact, I got some photographs this morning. I haven't had a chance to look at it. If it hasn't been done, I'll make sure you get photographs of that.
Okay. And I think you had noted to us that you're going to be providing us a survey. And I just want to clarify, the survey is just to provide evidence regarding the, the levels that you've talked about, because I think the, the case is premised on the fact that the buildings, basements had a lower level and therefore there's nothing at street level. Is that correct?
So I, yeah, so I'm glad you mentioned it that way because I'm not sure that this was going to be a survey that included elevations.
Okay, is this, so I think that's the reason why we asked it, is just to provide evidence in the record regarding the, the levels of curb and the levels of the floors of the building.
Right, I think, I mean, it's, it's readily apparent from the-
Yes, it is.
From the photographs, but you'd like it in more of a documented, I understand. So I'll make sure that that's part of the survey that's being completed. It may have already been completed.
Okay. Are there any speakers on this item? Any speakers? Any other questions for the applicant? All right, in that case, we can close the hearing. Mr. Most, do you think you can submit this to us in two weeks?
I think so. Maybe three weeks.
Okay.
I'm just concerned about if I've got to go back with the survey and-
I understand. July 8, that would be three weeks.
Right.
We could filter this out on July 22.
Thank you.
Motion to close.
Chair Shunivassan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 31, 27713BZ, 1769 Fort, George Hill, Manhattan, the office of Jeffrey Chester.
The applicant has asked for adjournment. We'll set the submission date for July 1 and the hearing for July 15.
Item number 32, 3-14BZ, 12-22 East 89th Street, Manhattan, the office of Friedman and Gap Down.
Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
We're going to take five minutes. All right, we're going to just take five minutes and, is, Mr. Free-
He's coming out.
He's coming, okay. So we'll just take five minutes and then he can-
Yeah.
Jeff, have it on the camera? The cam, the camera. Turn it off? Just turn it off?
Sound. Make sure the sound is on. No, make sure the sound is on. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back on the records. Please take your seats.
Item number 32, 3-14BZ, 12-22 East 89th Street, Manhattan, the office of Friedman and Gap Down.
What do you, Madam Chair, Commissioners? We have made our submissions and we attended the executive session yesterday. I understand there were a few questions which we're prepared to address, but other than that, we're eager to have the record closed and, and move on.
Okay.
One, one question that arose was with regard to Commissioner Hinkson's question about the elevator bulkhead for the Lula elevator that's been, that's been installed. I'd like to call Sam White up here and he can, he can describe why that elevator shaft bulkhead has gotten larger.
Thank you, Charlie. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Sam White from Platt Bar Develop White Architects for the applicant. Commissioner, your question had to do with, I think, the note on drawing P14 that said, 114 that said new bulkhead.
New bulkhead for the limited-use elevator.
The limited-use elevator.
And why it was-
What happened? We, we had to relocate the limited-use elevator when we shifted the whole gymnasium to the north by 4.2 feet. And that, we then moved the elevator into what was an abandoned elevator bulkhead on top of building number 16.
Right.
That in turn forced us to put the, so we had to enlarge that bulkhead by approximately two feet in each dimension. It's a sort of, it's a five-by-five or six-by-six foot bulkhead. Then we had to relocate the elevator equipment from that bulkhead where we had been planning to install it to the, by expanding the bulkhead in the rear of building 16. If you look in the plan, that the expansion on the rear of the roof of 16 developed a little aneurysm off to the side, which is the mechanical equipment room. Does that answer your question?
I'm assuming then that the cab of the elevator is actually, was actually larger than the existing bulkhead, so therefore you needed to enlarge the bulkhead and you also needed to make it taller than it was to accommodate the new equipment for the-
That's correct. The cab, the cab for the limited-use elevator is larger than the cab that was built in 1919 for that original building. We think we do not have to expand it vertically. We think that we can, with a variance, achieve the overrun within the height of the existing bulkhead.
Okay. That, that was my assumption, but it wasn't really clear whether or not you had expanded the elevator or, I wasn't, wasn't sure why the elevator got bigger all of a sudden, so that's fine.
If it got bigger, it was only by a small amount.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There was another question regarding the Landmarks Commission. As you know, they're not quite as efficient when it comes to substantial compliance and, and modifications as this, as this board. But we will, we do need, if the board accepts our proposal to move back the rear lot line above the auditorium, the second floor, 4.2 feet, we will need to modify that plan, those elevations at the LPC. I have spoken, we have met with them at a staff level. They have indicated to us that they believe we're in good range for a staff sign-off on those changes, the equivalent of substantial compliance here. And as soon as we know we have the green light, probably, we will make that, we will make that submission. And my guess is it will, it will take a few weeks to work its way through the process there, but we're, we're comfortable that we're in good shape substantively with regard to what we've offered to this board to move back the, to move back the rear, the rear wall above, above the second floor. That would leave only, in turn, that would leave two tasks for us. One would be, of course, modifying the official application, which we'd need some time. And secondly, our, as part of the secret review, DEP has asked for a Phase 2. That should go into them next week, and their 20-day clock hopefully will begin sometime next week on, on the Phase 2. And with that, we're, we're here to answer any questions that you may have. We have Chris Anastos, our, our structural engineer. If there's any further questions on issues of excavation or the structure of the building, we're fully prepared to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant? Just on the Landmarks issue, I think for the record, we need to have a certificate of appropriateness. If it's already in the record, then the board has in the past allowed a modification to take-
go into them next week and their 20-day clock hopefully will begin sometime next week on the phase two. And with that, we're here to answer any questions that you may have. We have Chris Anastos, our structural engineer. If there's any further questions on issues of excavation or the structure of the building, we're fully prepared to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant? Just on the landmarks issue, I think for the record, we need to have a certificate of appropriateness. If it's already in the record, then the board has in the past allowed a modification to take place as a condition of the ground. However, if you haven't received that and you have to go back to them anyway to get the CVA from... I know you have an approval from the commission, but if you have to get the paperwork and it can also incorporate these minor changes, then that would be helpful for the record.
Fine. We're operating on status letters because they wanted to see final drawings, you know.
I know. We have that. Our council has worked with their council on that issue several times and in the end, we usually get our certificate of appropriateness.
We... My bet's on you.
Okay. So it seems that you, if we close the hearing, you would need some time to make sure that you have your DEP sign-off and make these other changes to the landmarks. All right. Thank you. Mr. Barshaw, is he here? Are speakers on this item? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Lo Vanderwald. I'm president of Carnegie Hill Neighbors. We want to let you know that we are in favor of the revised proposal. We think that the rear yard incursions was a problem. Of course, there's very substantial non-compliance remains, but this was a best effort. And it still allows a regulation-sized gym, which we favored all along. And we have no problem with the height because it is, the increase in height is relatively modest, 15 feet or so, and the total overall height of 95 feet for this context of the block and what we've experienced with other schools is modest as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any speakers?
I lost count, sorry. Stephen Barshaw for 19 East 88th Street. The submissions that were recently provided by the school, the engineering reports, date from 2011 and 2012. These are the first time that these reports have been submitted to the BSA. We have not seen them previously. These provide the data that we had been asking for since the very beginning. We had said we didn't see any subsurface borings, test reports and so forth. And we retained an architect who did quite a bit of work based on the fact that there was no subsurface soil data and borings in the record. That architect went and inspected all the DOB files for all of the properties surrounding the site in order to try to ascertain what the subsurface conditions are. And then, in response to those materials, we see engineering reports that the school has had for two and three years. Why it wasn't submitted to the BSA with the environmental assessment, why it wasn't submitted in the original application, why it wasn't submitted when we asked for it in our initial opposition papers is baffling, but it's here now. And so we need some...
Well, Mr. Barshaw, I don't think they were relying on that in their initial analysis as to their A finding.
They were.
And I think they're responding to, in fact, your architect and asking us to look at another alternative which included significant excavation. So I don't see somehow the fact that they didn't put it into the record earlier on as a breach of anything.
Madam Chair, they referenced subsurface conditions in their environmental assessment and they did reference it in their initial submission. They talked about a parade of horrors, water, rock, millions of dollars of construction costs. I believe the number was $5 million that was put out there. That was in the beginning. This is not in reaction to us. Why they withheld that material, I don't know, and I can't figure out what their A finding was subsurface conditions, at least it seemed to me in part in their initial submission. Then they seemed to back off. Now they're back at it. But regardless, what we need, Madam Chairperson, is we need some time to be able to retain a subsurface expert and a construction estimator in order to deal with the materials that we have just seen, particularly the materials regarding subsurface conditions. There are a variety of matters that need to be addressed, including the quantity of underpinning, what this does to the potential foundations, whether foundations can be placed on rock, how much excavation is required beyond what they're proposing now. And we would request, Madam Chairperson, 21 days to be able to retain an expert and prepare these reports, since we had not had seen any of this material until it was just submitted.
I just wanted to bolster a point that the chair made, which is that the applicant's A finding is not based on the subsurface conditions. It's based on the irregular shape, the historic facades, limitations of the townhouse and the inability to incorporate a gymnasium and an auditorium into the space and then goes on to the deference argument under Cornell. So while I understand you asking the question as to why perhaps they were not, the GeoTech studies were not submitted before, but the point of fact, they're not really relying on them for the A finding.
Their entire application is we have to go up to seek a variance, a variance of approximately 18 feet in height, and we have to go up because we can't go down. That's what they've been saying since the beginning. And they have said it here and they said it at landmarks and they said it at the community board, and that's the only basis for which they're seeking a height variance. Everything else is square footage and they've talked about the fact that their square footage is not that much different from what their square footage is that's allowed as of right. The big variance here is a height variance and the only reason that they say they have to go up is because they say they can't go down. And now we're finally getting the truth, the full truth from their perspective as to why they say they can't go down. And all we want is to be able to rebut those arguments with proper evidence and a proper report with a proper amount of time to be able to retain experts and provide that evidence to the BSA.
So you said you need, you said three weeks?
21 days, please.
Okay. So that's for you to make a submission to us, getting the experts and responding that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, but Mr. Friedman, just before you come, are there other speakers on this item? Any speakers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Barshaw raised a number of questions which he said he's unable to answer. Let me try to provide some answers to him and to the board. In Headmaster O'Halloran's letter, I think he makes it very clear that the fact that excavation became a problem early on in the consideration of the school is not about, was not about the engineering difficulties or the amount of money at any price. This excavating for this school was not going to be a path it could programmatically follow. It would have required that most likely the school close or alternatively the whole building, the whole population be moved or alternatively, since it could not possibly be done in the summer with the underpinning identified in the report, that we'd have an open construction site there from the time school resumes to the next June. That served nobody's interests. It put at risk the historic facade and simply as a pure programmatic item, the discovery of rock was not, was not how do we overcome this, how do we overcome these difficulties because we need to excavate? It's let's not excavate. And that is, that was why it was not part of our submission. It was not part of our request to the board in terms of the findings. It wasn't provided to Mr. Barshaw and his client because it was irrelevant to the case that we made. It may not have been irrelevant to the case he wanted to make against us, but it was certainly irrelevant to the case we needed to make in front of the board. And we feel that we've made the necessary programmatic findings. You also have in the record the Zubatkin Associates timeline and the list of premium events that would be associated with excavation. So it wasn't as if we inquired and realized we had a hardship. We stopped, the school stopped inquiring about excavation faced with that litany of programmatic difficulties and premiums and that was the end, and that was the end of that. So that's why the record is where it is. Mr. Barshaw's engineers, architects submission did not indicate any lack of knowledge or any need for additional time. He was simply wrong. And if at that point there had been some request in his expert's testimony that there was insecurity about the documents or a review of our forms or our application or our plans needed more time, that was the time to make it, not on the eve of, not on the day of this hearing to come in and say, well, you know, our architect now needs more time. He had the time and he had the time to ask for more time. Now is not that time. We would ask that you consider closing the record, set a decision date. If the record needs to be kept open for some submission, we ask that we still move ahead towards the final schedule for a decision in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. I think the board engineer, in fact, had reviewed this document and felt comfortable with the conclusions of this document vis-à-vis the, leaving aside the programmatic aspects of not going below grade, but also just the structural reasons why that would be difficult. And in fact, I think she suggested that you even want to, may want to incorporate it as a part of your A finding because it's one more reason why an alternative is not, of going below grade is not possible. So I think that would help the record. I think the board is comfortable with us closing the hearing today. I think we can leave the record for Mr. Barshaw to make a submission. It will also give you the opportunity, will give you the opportunity to respond back to that, but also give you the opportunity to close the loop with DEP and with landmarks as well. So I think we can set a schedule. Mr. Barshaw said he needed, I think, three weeks and we can in fact give him till... To, so that's July 15th. That's three weeks. And Mr. Friedman, you can have a chance to respond back to on the 29th of July and we can vote this out on August 12th.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Make a motion to close.
Chair Shunivassen.
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I know that the first item on the new cases has a lot of speakers, so why don't we do this at the end of the calendar?
Item number 34, new cases, item number 34, calendar number 350...
350-12BZ.
350-12BZ, 532nd Street, Brooklyn, Sheldon Lobel.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel PC for the applicant. Good afternoon. Madam Chair, Commissioners, we are before you today with regards to 532nd Street in Brooklyn. While this is the first hearing on this matter, the area and even the building in question might be somewhat familiar to the board. I say that because in 2012, the board heard a case with regards to 853rd Avenue, which is a block from the premises. And the reason I raise that is because there's many similarities between the circumstances surrounding that case and the building here. That building was a storage center for the United States Navy. It was a building which was built in 1919, 1920. It was unused for about 12 to 13 years. And the board in that case granted a variance which was a different type of variance. That variance basically permitted use group 10A in the lower floors of the building, which was contrary to the M31 district. However, the circumstances surrounding that application, and we'd like to present those in further submissions to the board, are similar in certain regards with regards to the nature of the building. It was a building which was long unused, built pursuant to standards dating back to the 1910s, 1920s, and essentially was no longer fit for the purpose for which it would be permitted to be used as of right. Moreover, there was a deed restriction in that case and the board discussed the deed restriction in granting the variance application. And when the board discussed the deed restriction, while if you look at those resolutions, and I believe the case is 250-12BZ, if you look at those resolutions, the board doesn't specifically cite that the uniqueness itself is based, I'm sorry, 254 of 12BZ, that the uniqueness is based upon the deed restriction. But in discussing the available uses for that property, the board cites the deed restriction. It's discussed extensively in the findings. We now come to you with Overcoming Love Ministries and Reverend Leo Carl, who is the head of that organization. By way of a brief background, Overcoming Love Ministries is in the business of providing homeless housing and homeless services. They have been in existence for over 30 years. They have been providing these services for over 15 years. They have won awards. They have been recognized by the mayor's office as well as by the Department of Homeless Services for providing not only a shelter for homeless individuals in the city of New York, but also for important services in order that they may advance their lives, counseling services, nutritional services, jobs, training, childcare services. This is an important organization and we now come before the board today with a property that is located in an M31 in which a use group three nonprofit institution with sleeping accommodation is not permitted as of right. We had a representative at the executive session. We understand the board's concerns with regards to this property and the use thereof. We wish to address those, not only at this hearing, because of course, we've only had those comments for a day, but also with regards to future submissions to, not only to further document why we think it's appropriate and indeed necessary to locate this facility here, but also in an effort to modify our application in order to better address the board's criticisms of the current case. An M31 obviously only allows commercial and intensive manufacturing uses. We have Evan Lemonides here, who is the project environmental consultant. Mr. Lemonides can address some of the issues regarding the manufacturing at the site. Most importantly, the deed restriction, as is contained in the deed from the Department of Health and Homeless Services, and Human Services, my apologies, basically indicates that this property for 30 years from 2011, so through 2040 and beyond, may only be used for the housing of homeless individuals. We have a property which essentially, without the grant of a variance by the board, cannot be used. We feel that this, from a logistical standpoint, provides not only problems with regards to uniqueness at the site, but really just practical problems as far as what to do with this building. There were extensive environmental findings that were made with regards to the deed prior to us coming before the BSA, dating back to 2007, when the process began for the deeding of this site. And in the certificate issued by the, issued in connection with the deed, there is a finding of no significant impact, which says that the use for housing homeless people here will quote, "not significantly affect the quality of the human environment," unquote. So while we have a property that's in an M31 and while we have no doubt that there will be remediation required, this property could not have been deeded without a finding of no significant impact, particularly for this use. Other properties nearby were deeded for commercial purposes. The case in 25412BZ at 853rd Avenue was deeded specifically for commercial purposes. It was specifically for manufacturing purposes and permitted 15% retail at that site. That's not this case and that's not this property. This property was specifically deeded after extensive findings by the federal government specifically for homeless services and for housing homeless individuals.
But wasn't, and I could be wrong with the history of this, but wasn't GSA and the federal Human Services, weren't they approached to buy Overcoming Love Ministries to deed this site to them? And it wasn't as if they had come up with their own RFPs and put them out there and people came. It seemed like it was based on, in fact, the, I think, Homeless Persons Act and there may be a need for the federal government to support homeless services as well as, you know, homeless housing. But I think my understanding is that it came, did it come from the government or did it come from, I think, a request?
I think in the course of the proceedings, where it's appropriate to have Reverend Carl discuss, he can discuss a little bit of the background as far as the grant is concerned. He's intimately familiar, having been involved with that application process for years.
Okay. And the second question I had, a second issue, is that I know it's the deed says that you're required to use this, with this use for the next 30 years, so 30 or 40 years, but it also has a requirement that it should be constructed by, I thought it should be in use by August 2014, which is a month away.
Correct.
And that's not going to happen.
We're in the process of obtaining an extension of that date.
Okay, but... But I only raised this about being—for the ministry to be encumbered by this site, which they cannot use, is very problematic. But there is, I believe, a clause which allows you to revert the property back to GSA and with certain compensation. I could be wrong about that.
I'm gonna—I'd like to further brief the—
Yeah. If you could just look at that deed and just give us what the stipulations are. I know it's a concern that if the nonprofit has this property, they're required to use it. What do we do? But I just want to know what the alternatives are.
That's fine.
But I also—I wasn't completely convinced by the argument that somehow this site was slated for this use while other sites that are under federal government were slated for commercial use, and somehow it was a plan on their part to do it as such.
As I think it would benefit the board to hear the testimony of Reverend Carl, I think he can directly address those issues. We'd like to brief the deed and discuss that with the board.
Okay.
But Reverend Carl, being here and able to testify, can talk to that in a limited capacity. I'd also say that from a zoning standpoint and from a variance standpoint, the reason that we're happy that Reverend Carl and Evan Lemonides are here today is that we have findings to make, and we have findings with regards to character, and we have findings with regards to project uniqueness, the site itself, and program uniqueness. And I think that if you take a look at the board's precedent—and I understand the concerns over an M31 and putting—as one of the things that was stated, families in there—I think that our application and our future submissions will address that and may even modify the program in order to better address the surroundings and who may properly locate there. So that's one of the modifications we look forward to providing to the board. But I think moreover, that when there were some concerns expressed at the executive session about the nature of this M31 and what's in the area, I think that from a factual land use standpoint, we're within two to three blocks of an R7A, we're within a block from an M12D, which permits residential by CPC authorization. There is a recognition that, at least in the area, that there is either residential or the capacity to locate residential. And I would ask that you allow Evan Lemonides to speak, to address the specific concerns with regards to the M3 here, because I think what you'll find is that this surrounding area is akin to the areas where the board has similarly granted the ability to locate not only residential, but nonprofit with sleeping accommodations in M zones. I think that the M uses here really reflect the ability to harmoniously—
Well, I know of one—maybe one case that I can think of.
Correct.
Which is—it was in East New York.
Correct.
And it was for win, and it was a very different land use context, quite frankly. I think Mr. Lemonides can come and speak.
Okay.
But I think, quite frankly, what would be better is to have you do a real thorough analysis of the land uses in the area and provide us with some data before we speak—you speak about it.
Okay.
So you may want to do that in the next step, really, you know, identify what the specific uses are at the surrounding area, as well as, you know, the number of employees, the type of traffic one sees. And in terms of residential, which is several blocks away, what are we talking about? Are we talking about few units? Are we talking about hundreds of units? And I think that'd be helpful, unless he has this kind of material to present today, I would—okay. So I think you want to do that detailed analysis.
We'll provide that.
Commissioner Ali Brown, I know you had some concerns about the land use.
Right. That was—it was a two-part question that I had. The first one had to do with the fact that your statement said that you wanted to accommodate homeless families. And so the first question I had was, is that homeless families including children, or is that just two adults per family? Because I had doubts that this would be the proper location for young people.
Okay.
Then that led me to talk about needing to know more information about the uses directly surrounding this area, because when I took my visit, I saw rails that were not in use, rails that are in use, lots of very large factory warehouse uses, a lot of truck traffic, horrendous street conditions. And so I was questioning whether or not this would be an appropriate use here.
I think that that's one of the things that—when we provide our more detailed land use study, we would also—we are discussing internally the placement of individuals here and what would be most appropriate. So I think we're going to fully address that in the next admission.
All right. Just Vice Chair, do you want to comment?
No, I don't have to.
All right. Just on the comment of the deed, and I think you should research that more in terms of whether that's an appropriate basis for an A finding. Quite frankly, it doesn't strictly speak to the language of the text. So I think that's problematic. The second thing is that there are very different issues that were related to the other case that you talked about. And while there was a deed which was instituted as a part of the RFP with EDC, the board did not rely on it. Some of those issues really had to do with the obsolescence of the building. And those improvements that had to be done, which were costly, were in fact required regardless of the deed. So we were not relying on the deed, and I think you noted that as well.
Right.
So it's not a good precedent, quite frankly, for—
I think it's more valuable in terms of providing a full discussion of the background of the building and the type of construction that the building was built pursuant to the fact that bringing it up to 2008 building code, which was discussed in the resolution.
Well, this building you're tearing down, it's a small building, and it's just not at all comparable to a building which had, you know, 1.5 million square feet.
We can address that.
So I think they're very, very different. And I think if you want to put that as the deed aspect and that restriction as part of your A finding, I think you're going to need to do some more research on it.
Understood.
And/or provide different legal arguments than comparing it to the other case.
Okay.
And—yes.
Just—I guess there's other federal government properties in the area. You know, we did deal with the one that's directly to the north.
Of course.
But if there's other federal government properties and what's going to happen to them if they've been sold and what their proposed uses are going to be?
That would be helpful.
Okay.
I know you had raised the issue that this area may be changing in its land use.
All right. We'd be happy to address that.
All right. And just on, again, on the A find, the programmatic needs of what the 200 units are is not established anywhere. I think it's not established from a performance standpoint. It's definitely not established by a funding standpoint. I think the most recent correspondence, not from 2007, really doesn't say very much about what's driving this program of 200 units. So I think you want to come back with—you make the first cut on the A finding, and then you're talking about the programmatic needs, then I think you have to really support that with better—just better evidence.
We—we're familiar, having been before the board on similar applications for supportive housing cases, we can more—we can better document exactly. A, the services to be provided, which I think are fairly thoroughly listed in the statement, but more importantly, the actual requirements of the program, numbers involved, and the agencies who are involved as well. Because we do—and we have been in consultation with the Department of Homeless Services.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Yes. Would the father like to speak? Okay. Or we could just—if you'd like to speak since you're here, but otherwise, we can also just—
Thank you. My name is Reverend Carl, Leopoldo Carl. I was approached by the federal government in 2006 with a letter of interest on this particular site. I answered yes, and then the process began.
I'm sorry, who contacted you, Reverend? You said it was—
HHS.
Oh, okay, HHS.
Yes. Then the process began, and I never, never in my life expected that that would create so many problems, because I was even summoned by the president of Board of Brooklyn. And I sit down there and asking me why I want that particular site, that I never asked for that site. The site was cut by McKinney-Vento Act. McKinney-Vento Act upon GSA and GSA to HHS, and they talk about swapping lands. I don't even understand. I mean, the whole—I would say that was so many back and forths with this property. We even have—we do a preliminary meeting about two years ago, or a little more. I don't remember exactly to know where we was, because this particular site created all kinds of problems, actually. I never thought that I would be so involved into. Definite, definite—I felt that my position as a director of the ministry that I direct was to continue seeking the deed, because that was part of my responsibility toward my organization, and that's the reason why I'm here today.
Thank you, Reverend. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Okay. I would like to add something else, that our intention at this time, knowing all the problems that the veterans got coming back home, is just to make sure that this building will help them, will be helping single men and also single homeless men too. Our expectation is not to bring children.
It's not to bring children?
No.
I see.
It's not.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Are there speakers on this item? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Jeremy Lauffer. I'm the district manager for Community Board 7, and I'm representing the board today. Thank you for this opportunity to reiterate Community Board 7, Brooklyn's strong opposition to BSA application 350-12-BZ concerning 532nd Street, Brooklyn, Overcoming Love Ministries' proposal to build a facility for housing the formerly homeless. Our board held a public hearing on this matter in February 2013, and our full board voted on the application later that month. No board members voted to support the proposal. Thirty-two voted against the proposal, and three board members abstained. Our greatest concern—the greatest concern to our board members is the proposal's failure to adhere to the principles laid out in the board's 197A plan, new connections, new opportunities, which received votes of support by the Department of City Planning and the City Council in 2009, which does not contemplate housing uses in our manufacturing zones, because we believe this would set a precedent for housing development in an area that supports more than 21,000 jobs, with plans for additional thousands of jobs in the immediate vicinity of Overcoming Love Ministries' proposal. We are greatly concerned that housing in this area will increase property values to the point where manufacturing is no longer affordable and therefore viable. It is already known that hundreds of millions of dollars in public and private funds are being invested in the surrounding manufacturing properties predicated on the understanding that our manufacturing zone will remain intact. Huge investments have been made in Industry City, Liberty View Plaza, Sims Municipal Recycling Facility, the South Brooklyn Marine Terminal, rehabilitating the First Avenue rail line, all with the understanding that these investments and uses are supporting a manufacturing district. This proposed housing use undermines those investments and the numerous plans for industrial retention and expansion, potentially costing our community and the region thousands of jobs. This is not to say the population this facility is proposed to house will be unwelcome in our community. Our board has voted in favor of inclusionary housing, supportive housing, affordable housing, group homes and shelters, and Section 8 housing in the recent past, but in every case, those sites were in the residential part of our community. Sunset Park has been a welcoming community, and we would be happy to have our housing committee, which is already looking for sites to build additional affordable housing in the neighborhood, work with the applicant to find a site for their supportive housing proposal within our residential community that would not jeopardize the integrity of our manufacturing zones. We recently worked with the Fifth Avenue Committee on their supportive housing facility on Fifth Avenue and 16th Street, which includes efficiency apartments for the formerly homeless, seniors, and those fighting addiction. Another factor that needs to be addressed is the lack of local amenities and poor infrastructure in the surrounding area of the proposed facility. The site is cut off from our residential community by the Gowanus Expressway and Third Avenue, which is eight lanes and 180 feet wide, with poor lighting and sanitation beneath, making for dangerous pedestrian crossing. There are no grocery stores in the immediate vicinity of the proposed development, as there are no other surrounding residents. Trucks travel to and from the numerous industrial and manufacturing businesses and pass this site 24 hours a day, with more coming once Liberty View, Industry City, and South Brooklyn Marine Terminal are fully developed and marketed. 32nd Street itself is a jumble of sinking cobblestones and needs a multimillion-dollar reconstruction, as does Second Avenue, which still has trolley tracks running down its center. And perhaps most concerning regarding infrastructure, this area was significantly flooded during Hurricane Sandy. These infrastructure deficiencies and the lack of climate adaptation in the flood zone are not addressed by the applicant and would require millions of dollars in public investment beyond what has already been spent on the needs of the manufacturing community for a use that would have significant impact on their affordability and ability to attract businesses and jobs to our community. I would like to stress once again that Community Board 7's housing committee would be happy to work with the applicant to find an alternative site within the community for their proposal, as long as it's outside of the manufacturing zone. Thank you once again for hearing my testimony.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? Yes, please come forward.
Hi. My name is Maya Kremen, and I'm representing Congressman Gerald Nadler today. Wanted to introduce his testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to testify regarding the GSA former Fleet Management Center at 5 East 32nd Street, Brooklyn, New York. The Fleet Management Center, otherwise known as the Motor Pool Building, is located adjacent to the area of Sunset Park that I represent. I am in no way against bringing additional homeless families to Brooklyn and share the goal of the McKinney-Vento Act to provide more resources for the homeless. I have fought hard for funding that would directly benefit housing for the homeless and for additional funding for Section 8 and other homeless programs for New York's neediest residents. However, I believe that the present site is entirely unsuitable for a residential use of any kind. As I have pointed out, along with Rep. Nidya Velazquez, starting in 2007, when the property was first designated for this use, this area is an M3 zone, an area meant for industrial, not residential, use. This area is part of what has been designated as the Southwest Brooklyn Industrial Business Zone, a zone meant to attract light manufacturers and similar businesses to Sunset Park's industrial waterfront. NYEDC is currently reactivating the South Brooklyn Marine Terminal as a working maritime port. All of these uses have and will create steady, well-paying manufacturing jobs which are sorely lacking in New York and which are badly needed by our city's residents. That is why I fought to ensure that the former Federal Building Number 2, now the Liberty View Industrial Plaza, an adjacent GSA property, was used for manufacturing purposes and job creation. Putting residential housing of any kind in this area could open the area up to residential development, which would seriously impede the area's important roles in manufacturing zone. In addition, the property is in an area designated by FEMA as a 100-year flood zone. Those who are homeless or formerly homeless deserve to live closer to public transportation and other amenities. Such things are not available in the vicinity of Second Avenue and 32nd Street, an area which is also in the shadow of the Gowanus Expressway and in frequent path of large trucks coming to and from the industrial businesses nearby. It is my hope that Overcoming Love Ministries can find a site that is in a more suitable place for the needy individuals they hope to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Madam Chairman, Members of Board, my name is Jesse Mazur. I am land use counsel to Industry City. Industry City, as you may know, is the largest single-owned private manufacturing property in Brooklyn and the city of New York. We are— We are 6 million, over 6 million square feet, sitting on over 30 acres adjacent to the matter that's before you today. We are currently, having picked ourselves up after Sandy and having suffered significantly, are in the midst of one of the most exciting job creations and reinventions in the city of New York. Industry City is where it's happening and creating innovation economy and a home for new manufacturers throughout the city. We are concerned by the application today because we are in M3 zoning. M3 zoning is essential to what we do. It is not M1, it is not M2. There are things you can do in an M3 that are more severe and create disturbances, that create dust, that create noise, that create vibration. They are allowed to occur in M3 because without those, those uses could not occur. I can have a brewery in an M3 district, I can't someplace else. We are concerned by introducing a residential population to this area, what that will mean to both the residents that you're introducing and to the viability and the ability of us to continue to grow jobs in this incredible, exciting new market that is now emerging in Brooklyn and in our city. We are concerned about what protections are being taken in terms of extra ventilation and the idea that trucks in a heavy industrial area are constantly passing through. And looking at today as a snapshot of what's happening in Industry City, I assure you, is not what the future of Industry City is. We are growing, we are taking our dormant space that's in our facility, that's mostly storage, and we are reinventing ourselves and creating a new dynamic in New York, which we call the innovation economy. So when you're looking at the amount of truck traffic that's there today, there's going to be more in terms of the amount of heavy industrial and semi-heavy industrial work that's occurring there now, there's going to be more. You're going to be reading about it, you have been reading about it, and we are concerned about our ability to continue this important role for the city if you then introduce a residential population. And we are concerned about that residential population, what extra precautions are being taken to protect them. We don't believe at this present time that this is an appropriate use to introduce at a time when the city of New York is on a rebirth of its industrial sector. And for that, we will not be happy if this board ceases to approve this application.
Thank you, Mr. Mazur. Are there any more speakers on this item? Honored, Mr. Lebel, why don't we set a schedule?
Yeah, just a quick question. When you're doing your brief on the deed and its restrictions, could you just speak a little bit about, since the site was under federal government jurisdiction, is there a federal preemption or an override that perhaps should have happened? I mean, it's sort of forcing your client into having to get, you know, a variance.
Sure.
And we all know we're not supposed to create documents that like force a lawsuit. Well, this is sort of the same thing in the sense that you're forcing, you know, someone to have to go and get special permission to do it, so.
Yeah, we've performed some preliminary research, but we'd be happy to further provide that to the board. I understand the chair wants to set a schedule. If I may make three discrete points prior to that. The first is that we have the utmost respect for Brooklyn Community Board Seven. We had a thorough conversation about this. I understand their feelings about this and that this is contrary to the 197A plan. I would just say that with regards to the constant discussion regarding residential use, that is a use group two use, that is not this. As a matter of fact, were this a use group two residential use and more specifically a for-profit developer, I don't think that this application would be before the board. We are dealing with a use group three homeless housing nonprofit institution with sleeping accommodations, and many of the things that are discussed with regards to the lack of desirability of this site are particularly why this site is available to Overcoming Love Ministries, which does not have the wherewithal, the budget, or the ability to procure a site within an R7 zone. So while we understand some of the discussion from the community board and from the representative, the congressperson, we really feel that as far as a character discussion, we can discuss that in a, with a factual basis, providing empirical evidence to the board, discuss the fact that a residential use, while that may not be permitted here, a community facility use of this type of use group three should be permitted here and is compatible with these uses. The last discrete point I would make is with regards to Mr. Mazur's comments representing Industry City and his purported concern in an effort to quote-unquote "protect" and offer protections to the individuals. I still think that this is somewhat disingenuous. We're dealing with people here who are homeless, who have nowhere to go, who have no source of food or shelter. And while I'm sure that Mr. Mazur and his client are concerned about their ability to protect these individuals, the truth is that sadly, the programmatic needs of Overcoming Love Industry, Overcoming Love Ministry dictates that these are the people who fall to the bottom of society and are not protected by the over 6 million square feet of industrial and retail that is going to be offered by Industry City. So we'd be happy to further discuss the severe program needs of Overcoming Love Ministries and the inability to provide this direct type of homeless housing in residential districts. I'd finally add in closing that Reverend Leo Carl through Overcoming Love Ministries provides in East New York, in the East New York industrial area, provides a soup kitchen which serves over 400 meals daily to individuals in need of food and with regards to the discussion of the ability of these individuals in the proposed community facility to be fed and to provide groceries to them, will be a cafeteria offering nutritious food on the site and that Reverend Carl is more than capable of providing this at the premises. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lebel. Why don't we set a schedule? How much time do you need to get back to us? I think there are quite a few things.
Yeah, there are. We would want a minimum of four weeks.
All right. Well, why don't we bring you back in August?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so if you can submit to us on July 29th, we can bring you back on August 12th.
Madam Chair, is it possible to set the hearing slightly later than that? Reverend Carl is going.
Later?
Yes, thank you.
August 19th?
August 19th would be great.
Okay, so if you can submit to us on August 5th, we can have the hearing on August 19th.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Item number 35, calendar number 2813BZ, 1601 Graves and Neck Road, Brooklyn, Isa Koroszczy.
Isa Koroszczy.
Isa Koroszczy.
Good afternoon, Isa Koroszczy, applicant.
There were questions for the applicant? Yes.
Yes, one was the CFO was from 1988. Has that been updated?
Yes, Madam Commissioner, we have filed application alteration type one to update existing CFO. Currently, the building has changed from auto repair shop to, from clothing manufacturing to old retail. So we do have an open application, which we are waiting to hear about this case. Once this case is completed, we will proceed with completing our CFO, which is with the Buildings Department.
Now, this particular portion of the building has a fire alarm system?
We had, we have an application which is filed with the Buildings Department and is approved by the Fire Department for the supermarket portion, which is on the first floor. However, we did have, I did have a meeting with Mr. Alex Specter, who is the director of the fire alarm unit in the Fire Department, and I had brought this up to his attention and he has allowed us to provide a postapproval amendment to include the second-floor physical culture establishment as part of the fire alarm system, which will be connected to the first-floor supermarket. So it would be covered, yes.
Okay, so then you can add those fire alarm system notes to the plans.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Yes. Do you want to note on your plans regarding that there are no provisions for ADA compliance? Are you not required to provide ADA compliance?
Mr. Collins, I'm with this building since 1987 and I know every square inch of this building. We looked at every possibility of possibly providing lift to the second floor, but it's physically impossible having tenants to the left, tenants to the back of the stairwell going to the second floor, and we have a sprinkler piping control room, so.
I just wanted to know if you're code compliant?
It's an existing non-compliant and I don't believe Buildings Department has any issue. With this part of the building, we have installed elevator for the other part of the building, which is much larger for the second floor. On the second floor, this is the only unit which is by itself, and there's the only way to access are the stairwell that is provided from Graves and Neck Road to establishment. And we have a second means of egress, which was the original design, which is the catwalk takes you from this portion of the building to the second floor of the other side, which will lead you.
All right, if you can just demonstrate that Buildings Department has signed off on this, I would be satisfied.
Okay.
Have you made it to the community board yet?
In my 27 years of practice, I've never missed a public, any meeting, especially another meeting, important meeting such as community board meeting. When I was notified by a board staff that we got denied by the community board, I called them up myself and they said nobody was present on the night of the meeting, and I asked them how was I notified? I was told we faxed you, and I haven't used fax machine in the past six years. And I asked the owner-operator if he was notified, and he was not notified either. So it was just, we were never notified that there was a meeting. I always attend my meetings.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Any speakers on this item? Okay, Mr. Koroszczy, how long do you need to get back to us on the few items? You submit to us in three weeks?
I could do that in three weeks, yes.
Okay, so if you submit to us on the 15th of July, we can continue the hearing on July 29th.
If I may ask you a question, on that ADA compliance with the Buildings Department, I don't know if I can do anything at this point with them because they're, my application is not going to go forward until we get the approval, let's say, the board.
Right, I think, okay, so this is our concern. Within the context of a physical-cultural establishment, we have no ability to waive any of the building code requirements regarding ADA. Now, sometimes people go to the mayor's office of disabilities and you get waivers. I think you may have to do that because that is not going to be within our purview to waive.
Although if the DOB did not.
If you didn't identify this as an issue and they believe that your plans are code compliant, then the issue goes away, then it's fine.
So if it's on the objection sheet, then I should be okay?
Right, right, it should be okay.
Okay.
But we're just, more or less, we're alerting you to that this may be an issue and one way or the other you'll have to resolve it, but you can't resolve it over here.
Okay.
It's a matter that we look for in pretty much all the PCE applications.
So if you can, so if you can respond back to us and see where you're at.
July 15th.
So, I think I gave you a date?
July 15th.
Yes, okay, so July 12th and then the 29th will be the hearing?
Was it July 12th or 15th?
15th, July 15th and the hearing on the 29th.
Thank you very much.
Item number 36, 28313BZ, 4930, 20th Avenue, Brooklyn, Alexander Levkovich.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to submit my proof of notification.
I'm sorry, just please state your name for the record.
Alexander Levkovich, on behalf of the applicant.
All right, so you notify the people within the radius?
Good afternoon, honorable chairperson, members of the board. I was present yesterday at the executive session and there was a question raised as to the parking, whether it was.
Right, before we get to the parking, are you enlarging the building?
No, what we're doing is we're building a mezzanine.
That is, okay, but that counts as additional floor area, correct?
Yes, we are increasing the floor area.
So you're increasing the floor area, so I'm just concerned because I, just to make sure that you're, if you're increasing the floor area, are you allowed to do it under this district?
Yes, under ZR 43121-B, as of right, we're allowed to increase it by 50%. There is precedent, 153-12BZ, also for an M1-1 use that was a physical-cultural establishment, where this board allowed a 1.13, 50% increase.
Let me just, leaving aside the PC altogether, just put that aside, can this building enlarge from what's .99 FAR to 1.5 FAR?
Yes, the building itself is 24 feet high. The way it's set up is that, if I am understanding your question correctly, there's.
I understand it's within the envelope, right? So that's what you're saying. But isn't this an M1, so it's an M1-1 district, it's allowed 1 FAR, how do you exceed to 1.5 FAR?
So.
Yes, what does that say?
Zoning resolution 43121-B allows you to increase up to 150% of the permitted FAR, which in this case is 1, so which allow us to 1.5 and we are within that requirement.
Okay, I wasn't familiar with that. What is it, 431?
43121B.
Okay. All right, so that's one issue. The second issue is with this increase in square footage, do you have a parking requirement? I think that was commissioned by the commissioner.
Yeah, so just briefly, before I get into the technical, I submitted a letter, I'm not sure if, I submitted only on Friday.
Right.
I have copies present on me now. I'm not sure if the board had an opportunity to review the contents of the letter, but I'll get into a brief description as to those requirements. Before I get into that, I would just quickly like to discuss the facts on the ground in terms of parking, just to give some context as to the neighborhood vis a vis the parking.
Right, I know, in fact, you wrote to us and you explained why you don't believe that one necessarily needs the parking because of the surrounding area. I think that's not the question. The question is really, do you have a parking requirement?
Okay, so I can skip that discussion if we're, if, I'll move on. In 44-21, as far as I understand, the parking requirement that was referenced in the notice of comments relies upon, and this is in the letter I submitted on Friday, and I'll read from it, uses in PRC parking requirement category B1 in use group 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 13, 14, 16, or when permitted by special permit. Clearly, this is a case that we're asking for a special permit for a parking requirement. And then in the same section in PRC-B, it only requires parking for uses 6, 8, 9, and 10. If you look up the index of uses in the appendix, a physical-cultural establishment is clearly identified as a PRC-B, not a PRC-B1 parking use category. And clearly, based on the language of the zoning resolution in 44-21, there's no requirement for parking in a special permit in a PRC-B use. Now, as a ref.
Right, it has a list, the parking requirement has several categories. What you focused on, this is one category where the examiner asked you to look at that. So your argument is that it's a PRC-B, not B1.
Yes.
And therefore, in that clause, it's not included, but is it included elsewhere?
So in any of, as far as I was able to, I mean, I clearly scanned through comprehensively everything in the manufacturing parking regulations, there's nothing there requiring parking in a PRC-B that's permitted by a special permit. And as further support, if, just as a comparison.
Right, but are you looking for both the standard of PRC-B as well as special permit?
Well, there's references to.
Because I just see some regulations, it's a different standard. This was one for 300, right?
Yep.
Somewhere else, it's one for 600. I don't know if that's the one.
Yeah, I think that was PRC-H. The places where there's parking required for a special permit application, there's a specific reference for a parking requirement category attached to it. So in this particular case, as I just mentioned, it's a PRC-B1 that requires the 300, 1 and 300 square foot spots. Now, as is I outlined in my letter, if, just as a mode of comparison, if you look at the parking requirements in Commercial District where ZR 36-21, it's actually the reverse. In PRC-B, there is a parking requirement for uses authorized by special permit, but in PRC-B1, there isn't, which clearly. in PRC-B-one, there isn't, which clearly highlights a, a policy decision within the zoning resolutions that, in our situation, parking should not be required. It's-
All right, why don't we identify this as an issue for maybe the Buildings Department to review and see if they require it? Uh, because I know in your opinion, I'm not saying that your opinion's wrong, but it's a little bit complicated, and, um, all right, so if, we can include a condition to, to-
Now, uh, there is other rationale that I would be willing, that I have to put forward in front of the board, why parking should not be required, but I felt like this was the main point, that if this is-
I think the board is not, doesn't, in the, doesn't have the discretion to decide whether it's appropriate or not appropriate within this context. It either applies and you have to provide it, or it doesn't apply and you don't have to provide it. But the board is not waiving the parking requirement or really commenting on it, so I, I appreciate that you've given us that information, you've already said that in the record, but I think our concern is really that if it's required, then you have to provide it, and we have no ability to waive this.
Okay, so then, just as a point of clarification, then I would have to take this back to the Buildings Department prior to the next hearing, to see what they, what they would comment, or we can just move forward with the VSA application and after the fact?
What do you do?
I can get the, uh, Buildings Department approval?
I think, I think we should get a Buildings Department read on this.
Okay, so if you can get a Buildings Department read on this.
Okay.
Okay.
It shouldn't be difficult.
Okay, no problem.
All right. Any speakers on this item? Okay, so we'll continue the hearing. How much time do you need to get back to us? Sorry, do you have a question? I'm sorry, I didn't-
One comment about removing the graffiti.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I spoke to the owners, I mean, they're certainly not the ones responsible for the graffiti, it's something outside of their control, but they're certainly going to be cleaning everything up. Okay?
Okay, so Victor, can you provide photographs of it being cleaned up, or they're gonna do that right now, or when they do?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
As soon as it's cleaned up, you know, we'll expedite-
All right, I think the requirement is, yes, supposed to do within two days or something, so if you could provide that to us, that'd be great. You can submit to us on July fifteenth, we can continue the hearing on July twenty-ninth.
Okay, thank you.
Item number thirty-seven, count the number fifty-seven fourteen BZ, one New York Plaza, Manhattan, Law Officer Jay Goldstein.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. I appeared at yesterday's review session, and there was, um, one question by Vice Chair Collins regarding the physical therapy space. Uh, my wife's a physical therapist, I asked her if, um, she constitutes a massage parlor, she told me no, and she almost hit me.
I've had a physical therapist for my hip surgery, I understand that's very different.
Um, I, I did actually reach out to a number of physical therapy locations to see if there's any requirement, before you open a physical therapy shop, for DOH approval or any other government approval, as long as you're licensed and within a commercial zone, you can open up shop, there's no government agency governing you.
Fine, so we didn't even need to know about it, did we?
Right. The reason it was on the plans is because I needed to call that space something, that's what it's used for, and there was no other way to cut it out of the plans.
Good.
Any other questions? Any speakers on this item? If no speakers, we can close the hearing.
Chair Shunivas?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brand?
Aye.
All right, we'll decide this on July fifteenth.
Thank you very much.
The second call item?
This is second call for new case, item number thirty-three, count the number three-hundred-dish-twelve BZ, thirty-six West Ninety-third Street, Manhattan, Davidoff Hutcherson.
Did I spell your name right?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, Howard Weiss, Davidoff Hutcherson Citron for Columbia Grammar. We're extremely pleased to be here this afternoon. This hearing is a long time coming, and by that I mean that we filed this application in October of two thousand and twelve. Between October two thousand and twelve and April of two thousand and thirteen, we embarked upon a process where we hosted two community forums, independent of the community board, and we met multiple times with the community board to ascertain concerns about this project. Subsequent to that, and in response to those concerns that we heard, we made modifications to the plan, that addressed concerns about access to light and air, and then returned to the Landmarks Commission to be sure that the Landmarks Commission would approve those modifications before we returned to the board. We also engaged the traffic engineering firm of Sam Schwartz, who helped us try to effectuate some modifications in terms of the concerns about, uh, traffic patterns on Ninety-third Street. That's an ongoing process, they're still engaged, and we're still working, and we have some more work to do. With that, I would say, we attended your executive review session yesterday, we heard some of the concerns expressed, and what we would like to do, and I, I would like to just repeat what I understand to be the four issues that the board would like addressed, and then what we would like to do is in a full submission, including an amendment to our statement of facts and findings, and production of ancillary documents, respond to the board's concerns, and respond to anything else we hear today. And I understand that the four concerns discussed at yesterday's executive review session was a desire that we expand upon the representation that was made about having an upper, only an upper and lower school division, and having our seventh grade intermixed with the upper school is something that was, is outdated, and in fact, um, to some extent deleterious from a pedagogical perspective. I understand the second concern is something that's been articulated, uh, by the neighbors regarding traffic conditions on West Twenty-third Street, and, uh, the board would like a, uh, fuller exposition as to what we might do to try to address that. You want a further discussion regarding the load-bearing concerns that resulted in the distribution, distribution of the proposed additional floor area, in other words, an elaboration on the Silman report that we provided. And lastly, a further discussion of the outdoor roof area and how that's getting into play in terms of the adjacent uses. So with the board's permission, as I said, we'd like to submit a full, uh, and detailed response to all of these issues, and then hopefully at the continued hearing, you can review that, and we can answer any questions, provide clarification. I will note that we do have the full project team here today, in the event there's an issue that you need to have addressed today, but from our perspective, we'd like to make a further written submission. And with that, I would like to thank the board for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, so is that fine with the board members? That's fine, we'll wait for your submission.
Thank you so much.
I know that, uh, people here to speak on this item, uh, please come forward, yes. Each person will be given a chance.
Hi, um, my name's Juan Reyes, and I'm a partner at the law firm Safar Shaw, and currently representing the Westside Organization for Responsible Development. Buildings included in that organization are Seven West Ninety-second Street, Thirty-five West Ninety-second Street, Seventy West Ninetieth Street, Three Twenty-five Central Park West, Three Twenty-seven Central Park West, and Two Thirty-three Central Park West. Also notified in our, in our group, and, and supportive are Three Twenty Central Park West, Three Twenty-two Central Park West, and Ten West Ninety-third Street. And Community Board Seven has been, um, supportive of our position. Uh, you know, I, I'm very glad to hear that, uh, that Mr. Weiss is going to elaborate on, on some of these findings. Um, in the submission I made, I brought up, uh, a lot of the issues, such as the programmatic need, and, um, that not really being fully vetted out, and usually, um, at the board, when, when a school comes, they, they compare themselves to other schools, Independent School League, it's not just a, a small universe of their, their own subjective ideas, but I understand these schools do compete with each other. Uh, Trunde is down the street, Collegiate has, uh, recently moved to the West End, and these are similar-sized schools, um, however more appropriately located. Um, and I, our, our concerns that we, uh, submitted to the board last week, um, remain. There has been extreme growth here, there's maybe four to five hundred students in the late nineteen-nineties, and now it's in excess of twelve hundred students. Uh, they did have the expansion two thousand and one, um, they underestimated the impacts from that expansion, and this current expansion seems to be also underestimated, and I'm going to ask Evan Lemonides here to, uh, speak about, um, he's our traffic consultant, speak about why we believe that they're beyond the threshold for, for, uh, city environmental quality review, um, upon the estimations of ten classrooms and potentially up to seventy-five students, uh, coming out of the seventh grade to, to add to their middle school. Um, you know, the one case I did mention, and was also mentioned in another case here, was Cornell, and in that case, a lot of deference is given to our schools, um, and our community facilities. However, there was, there was a test, um, regarding the, um, health and welfare morals in the neighborhood, just meaning that if there's a potential negative impact, that can outweigh the expansion. And Columbia Grammar is an excellent school, but, in the same token, there has been a lot of, a lot of traffic impact from the current program. They did, uh, bring in Sam Schwartz to give ideas of what could be done. Um, currently, they're not working, we did our own analysis, and we saw it with our own eyes, and we, and we did traffic counts, and we were hoping that we, they would have, um, more impact or be able to solve the solution, uh, solve, solve the situation, but they haven't. You know, they're basically, they're just people wa, waving traffic in that can't get through because it's just not enough street. And what we want to do, uh, as suggested by the Vice Chair, um, I guess it was a case a, a week ago or so, um, would be able to talk to the applicant and find out, what is it they want to do? How many students do they see in their program? They're telling us about this program where they want to separate into three different, you know, lower school, middle school, and upper school, but how many kids will that be ultimately? Um, how do they see this working? Um, how, how are they going to make this, this site work without negative impact, negatively impacting the neighbors? And that's really our concern, and my clients have told me that although there were these forums, they felt that they, there was not, um, full disclosure on what i, is it that was needed, and, um, how many students would ultimately be in this expanded school, which is already seems to be beyond full capacity. Um, and we believe from our study that this one specific variance case will increase traffic and make it even worse, but to, to a case where it does, um, require full traffic analysis, department transportation. So with that, um, you know, that is our request. Uh, we do have speakers, I know your time is limited, um, I'm going to have Evan talk about what, what he found, and then, um, we will have three speakers from our media group.
Okay, and just before we take Mr. Lemonides', um, testimony, um, you said that you're confused about what is being proposed and what's going to be the impact.
I'm not confused, we have our own analysis.
Right, but I think-
So we'd like to see what theirs is.
Well, well, first of all, it seems that the concern, and I could be wrong, is that the existing traffic on these streets, and where the buses load, and, so it's an existing condition that you seem to have issues with.
Two, existing and proposed.
Right, but the proposed-
Existing condition is already saturated, and then this condition will increase that condition.
Ri, right.
On it, on its own, by itself.
I understand that, but you, you seem to be saying that there's confusion about what would be the increase, but I thought in the application, it was pretty clear that they said it would increase the enrollment by thirty students, and you've come back-
It makes no sense, and that's why I'm going to ask Evan-
It makes no sense because-
I, I, I'm going to say that according to our expert, the way, uh, the secret manual dictates that you calculate the number of students, it seems to be many more, and that's what he's going to discuss. I'm an attorney, not a traffic expert.
All right, I'm just trying to understand what the issues were.
And we're, I'm not trying to say we were confused, we just had a separate analysis that didn't mesh with theirs, and we'd like to know, and maybe they put a condition on the resolution that says only thirty students, so that nobody's afraid that it's going to be seventy-nine.
All right, so you're, you're saying that the way it should be calculated in terms of increased enrollment or increased number of people coming to the site, based on the secret analysis, shows another number?
Yes.
And that that's a worst-case scenario or something, and that should be factored in, in terms of the analysis?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Lemonides?
Uh, Evan?
And then we'll take testimony from people who come here.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Commissioners, Evan Lemonides, Principal at ELA, and we were retained by the, uh, Westside Organization for Responsible Development to review the EAS and the traffic analyses that were part of the application for the proposed variance for the expansion. And as Mr. Reyes indicated, and is, is evident now, this is just, this is, uh, the latest, the latest in a series of expansions that did begin in the nineteen-nineties, and that, um, enabled the school to approximately double its enrollment since two thousand and one. And I think one of the problems is that each of these past applications has consistently underestimated the number of students and the amount of traffic that would be generated by these expansions. So when we look at this study, we, we, we see the number, and I'm going off topic now, but I want to respond to what, what came up with this race. I mean, we, we look at this number that's provided, which is thirty students, but there's no, there's no rationale given for it. Are they seventh graders, are they eighth graders? Are those thirty students going to be joined by another thirty students the following year, when, when, when the following class follows up? There's no methodology given for this number. Just on the face of it, if you're increasing the number of regular classrooms by ten classrooms, and you have an average class size of a, of fifteen, that sounds to me like a hundred and fifty students. Maybe it is thirty students, but how are we supposed to know how that fits into this program and need? That was, I think, the point that we wanted to make. Um, and yes, you know, given the lack of, 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 of a table that just shows existing students by grade, proposed students by grade, we looked at the number of classrooms, it wasn't a trip generation thing from IT, but we looked at the number of classrooms, ten classrooms, we looked at the average class size, fifteen. Might the class sizes be reduced with additional rooms? Possibly, but that's, that's information we think should be given to the decision-makers, that you guys can make, you know, a informed decision. Um, on the face of it, ten classes, fifteen kids, a hundred and fifty students. A hundred and fifty students means three hundred trips, because each drop-off and pickup is actually two trips, right? Because your parents are dropping them off, then they're leaving, so there's two trips, so now you're talking three hundred trips. And that's, that on its own would require, certainly require traffic study, even if you had no, no problems in the existing conditions, by any measure. Anyway, going back, I mean, I, I, it was, so, so basically, when I, and we did our study, we did the, we spent a couple of weeks out there, we wanted to learn what's going on right now, what's going to be, what, you know, how are things going to change in the future, and we, 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 we found that, yes, e, e, adding the amount of new traffic that we realistically expect to happen, and we may be wrong, but, and if we are, we'd be happy to, again, to sit down and go over our numbers, and go over their numbers, and see that we are matching each other and making sense. But given what we found, this is going to be tremendous impacts to an already extremely congested area. That's about it.
Okay, any questions? All right, uh, thank you. I know that people here to speak on this item, each person will be given three minutes.
Thank you, Paige Cowley, I'm a member of Community Board Seven and co-chair of land use, and I'm here to say how pleased we are that this project didn't really come before you, um, because, um, we heard this project in two thousand and thirteen, um, in, I think it was February and March, and as the applicant said, um, members of our community board attended several informational meetings prior to the official hearings that we had at the community board, as well as involving a joint meeting with transportation. So this has been a very significant project for the community board to review. Um, in the interest of time, because our resolution is five pages, um, I think you would die before the end of that, I'm just going to summarize some of the key issues that I think, um, still linger. I do know that, um, there, there's been a very active residential group looking at things, and also subsequent traffic studies. But because this has been a year since we've officially been able to present our comments to you, I can only respond to what we knew then, and tell you that we're open to hearing further comments and improvements on the design that I know that they've been working on. So, um, just to start with, um, I, you know, the facts are that they're going, is how we based our, um, resolution- resolution, that they are proposing to increase the square footage from twenty-eight thousand one seventy-eight to forty thousand seven seventy-eight, which is below as of right. So we've taken all these factors into consideration. The applicant has generated a significant amount of opposition, which you're going to hear on Ninety-third and Ninety-second, both because of traffic and also because of the way the bulk has been stacked across their sites. We did look at the five findings, and you'll see in greater detail in our response, but basically to highlight certain elements for finding A, and this has to do with unique physical conditions to the site. The applicant has pointed to several factors, and to cut to the chase, we did not believe that none of these foregoing conditions, either singularly or in combination, solve the finding A. And that has to do with the lot mergers and the shape of the lot, its narrowness, et cetera. The other major issue here was for the programmatic need, which you're going to hear probably a lot more, and the community board is certainly very interested in this, because we're seeing a burgeoning growth of schools and a need for expansion. The Cornell case continues to be cited. Again, I jumped forward on page two, that where Cornell, the issue there was the use of the zoning lots, but the size of the buildings on the zoning lots. So what we're talking about here is bulk, not use, and that's of great concern to Community Board Seven. And then there were other references to other schools on the Upper West Side on page three of our resolution. The applicant has drawn attention to two BSA decisions, Abraham Heschel and York Prep, but we felt that those cases demonstrates that the board did not ignore the A finding in deference to the school's programmatic needs. Rather, the board made detailed findings relating to the lots and how the peculiarities of those lots made it impossible for the schools to fulfill their programmatic needs absent a variance. We similarly give deference to the school's expression of need, but the application here merely asserts a need without explaining how its uniqueness of the lot impacts. And there's more to come on that. Finding B is implausible. Finding C, and this has been the most difficult one for the community board to grapple with, and that is the finding C, that it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or district or impair the appropriate use. And again, just summarizing the two topics, traffic, you're going to hear a lot about that, and we've done our own count, in addition to the experts on both sides who looked. But we felt that given the tentative nature of the consultant's report and the need for the school to consult with and presumably put into effect recommendations, it cannot be safely predicted that traffic congestion can or will be brought under adequate control. The second issue here is also on the setbacks on Ninety-second Street, the concern of neighborhoods in light and air. Finding D, as noted above, the irregular shape of the lot resulted from a combination of two lots by the applicant, and therefore, we find that there are no self-created conditions relevant to the application. And lastly, finding E, the community board has no reason to dispute the assertion by the applicant that if a variance is granted, the present proposal represents the minimum variance. I'm here to state that we debated this numerous times, and you'll see by the tallies that it was more than unanimous, the vote unfortunately in favor in several of the aspects of the findings. And we look forward to working with the applicant and hearing your comments, any homework that we can do to help make this come to a better project. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker. The speakers on the side, please come forward.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Matt Dixon. I'm a resident at Ten West Ninety-third Street, which is actually right in the center of the school. Our wonderful neighbors, we've been neighbors for well over thirty years, and we've lived in harmony pretty much with the construction that went on in the 2000s, and they built two buildings right on either side of us, and then they, you know, they had the existing building in front of us, and they have a building behind us. So we're right in the middle of Columbia Prep. And it's, you know, the kids are, for the most part, great. The teachers are phenomenal. It's just that we didn't get a chance to really get the full benefit of the community board's objections and be able to realize not only the height, they want to go up higher, so we're a six-story building, so that really, really kind of affects us with potentials for maybe either a community garden or a green roof or something like that in the future, which we want to hold on to. But primarily, it's, I got to say, the traffic is one big issue there on Ninety-third Street. The traffic study that they did, we weren't really completely involved in, we weren't consulted with. And the, right, the way they have proposed it is that they're going to funnel all of their entire student population right in front of our building and to come in and go out. And we are, again, right, right in there. So there may be some other discussions we can have. I would hope to look at other ways that they could address the traffic issue there. They do have several other entrances on various other buildings, various other streets, but we're kind of unique because we're right in the middle of their sort of compound. And again, we've cohabitated with them for a long time, and, you know, they have wonderful students, wonderful teachers, they have good students, but they do have a lot of traffic. I mean, and big, big cars coming in, you know, in and out twice a day, and then they, you know, they've actually, it's just hard because they're right, our entire frontage of the building is just sort of consumed. And that's really all I had to say.
Thank you.
All right.
The next speaker, yes, please come forward.
Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Sean Donovan. I'm a shareholder at Ten West Ninety-third Street, and we, I've been there for, like the previous speaker said, before the other buildings went up. We've been there, not a problem. I knew that in a way, there was, this originally came forth, and it was, for whatever reason, shell-shut down or rescinded. We hadn't heard about it again until I went about the parking spots that were taken in front of my building. They're now a no standing zone. Upon researching what transpired, those signs were put up via, they circumvented due processing the fact that Sam Schwartz went direct to the DOT, had those signs put up. We were never included, for whatever reason. Like, we are the most impacted building to whatever the school does in the fact that, due to the fact that we are the donut hole for them. And when, once those sites, those spaces are removed, it creates basically like a street shutdown quad effect, and where that did not exist before, when, just due to the fact that it was parking to the general public. And that's not the case anymore, and it's being primarily used basically as a layup area for the quick, for parents to run in and out of the school, and it's not being used as the no standing zone when it's originally what it states for. It's an imposition upon us. It's a situation that was created, and now the solution is benefiting the school itself. And we feel, you know, unduly put upon, and it is our belief that this is a result of an answer to a stipulation that was put forth in front of the Community Board Seven, and because there wasn't, these parking spaces weren't taken because the community, because the people in the community said, you have a traffic problem, deal with it. This is a response to their request to build. The request to build stimulated the request for them to deal with the traffic situation, resulting in these spots being taken, being limited in front of our building, which now makes our building their, like, quad, and basically the limo drivers can sit there waiting for students type of a situation. And it's like, they've, an issue created and solution benefiting at our expense, and that was how that's related. Now, we had not received notification, the initial application was like, I believe it was in '08. This was refiled in '12. We didn't receive notification on it with the community, from, that it was at the community board. I didn't, our building didn't get notice on the, on the two dates in, on the 13th.
I'm sorry, your time is up. But did you get notification about this hearing?
This one we got notification about.
Okay.
The other ones we had not.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Can this be notified, right?
Yes, I understand that. There's, I think, seven properties, something, yes, sir?
Hi, my name's Holly Hughes. I live at 333 Central Park West. So we are as, just about as engulfed as you guys are, because we have, we are living right on Central Park West, next to one of their buildings, across the street from one of their, two of their other buildings, and around the corner from the six other buildings. Central Park West is the place where the SUVs particularly like to line up. A street that had been two lanes is reduced to one lane in each direction. I am awakened every, I don't have to set an alarm anymore, thank you so much for that, because at 7:30 every morning, still, no matter what the changes have happened, I'm still awakened by honking every morning from 7:30 on. I do not, I work from home, which means I don't have to fight through that to get to work in the morning. I wait to walk my dog until after 8:30 so that my dog, whose nose is right at the exhaust pipe level, doesn't have quite, isn't quite as endangered by the idling SUVs in front of our building. But because I work from home, I also have to deal with it in the afternoon. I know perfectly well that if I have an appointment, I should not make it so that I have to leave my apartment anywhere between 2:00 and 3:30. If I have an errand to do in the neighborhood, I shouldn't do it between 2:00 and 3:30, because neither of the two streets that I have to go to to get away from Central Park West can really be very easily trafficked because of the number of people gathering on the sidewalks. And the SUVs are now lining up, starting at 1:30 in the afternoon. The drivers have nowhere else to go, so why not idle in front of the building? This year, when I was cleaning out my air conditioners, I pulled out a quarter of a cup of horrible black stuff, which I'd never seen. We've lived in our building for 26 years. This is the first year that I saw that much stuff gunking up my air conditioners because of the number of SUVs that have been idling outside of our building for hours at a time. I had brain surgery in November, and I elected to stay in the hospital one more night because I knew I wouldn't be able to sleep in my home. Anyone who's slept overnight in a hospital knows that it's not a good place to sleep. It's better than my apartment because of the traffic problems caused by the school. And on top of that, summer comes, we go, thank goodness, we've got summer, we can rest. The past three summers, our neighborhood has been disrupted by construction on various other projects by the school. And the last summer's work, they did a beautiful job of renovating the facade of their original building on West Ninety-third Street, but because it was begun late in the summer, they were doing work on weekends. To be awakened at 8:00 AM on a summer Saturday by jackhammers is not my idea of life. It's a quality of life that has been severely impinged upon by the school's need to grow. We've been there for 26 years. We've watched this exponential growth, growth of the school. It is at an untenable level, and I really hope that you consider not allowing them to expand at all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker. Are there any more speakers on the side? Yes, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Diller. I'm a member of Community Board Seven, but our land use co-chair, Paige Cowley, gave the presentation for the board. I'm speaking in my own capacity. I am a member of the steering committee and was chair of Community Board Seven during the period in which our board worked on this application. There was a few points that I'd like to emphasize to your consideration, and I'm going to return to the five factors in order to do that, and specifically factor A, because I think you've heard a lot from the community about factor C. And so in factor A, the board concluded, after much deliberation, that there is no unique physical characteristic that warrants a variance in this place, because none of the proffered bases by the applicant meets it. The notion that a standard-size twenty- or twenty-five-foot lot is a narrow lot requiring a variance would mean that essentially zoning in our district would always be subject to a variance, that a variance would be qualified for virtually every lot on the Upper West Side. This is not one of those narrow, oddly configured, looping-around-a-gigantic-rock kind of physical conditions that we read 72-21 as providing a remedy for. And so, and what's more, to the extent that the configuration of the existing structures or the difference between the lot frontage on Ninety-third Street is different than that on Ninety-second Street, is the basis for their contention that this is an unusual physical condition, that was completely created by this applicant in its previous efforts to merge lots. So our D finding says that we do not believe that the condition is, that the condition is self-created, because we don't think it's a relevant, we don't think that that's a physical condition that satisfies the A finding. But if you were to think that the A finding is satisfied by this very standard, run-of-the-mill merger of two rectangular lots that just happen to be slightly different in size, then I think you must find that the D finding has been satisfied in that they did create it themselves. A brief note about the Ninety-second Street elevation, and this is a particular pet peeve of mine, because our, the development pressure on the Upper West Side, since there are relatively few vacant lots, development pressure in our neighborhoods goes on top of buildings rather than next door to them. And here, both because of its landmark preservation status, and we're a little bit surprised to hear that this went back to LPC without coming to the community board's preservation committee, I'm sorry to hear that that was in-run, that in effect, the Ninety-second Street elevation, if I may just briefly summarize—
I'm sorry, your time is up. Can you—
Just one quick word.
Yes, yes.
The Ninety-second Street elevation is effectively a rear yard, and we are greatly concerned about the proliferation of full width, full height, and in this case, full depth rear yard additions. We think that's a bad precedent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right, Mr. Weiss? There is?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Simone Block, and I live at 71 West Ninety-second Street, so I'm not across the street or right smack in the middle, and I've only been on the block for 20 years, so I'm a newcomer. And I live on Ninety-second Street, a block which houses a public school and a nursery school, is one of the proposed expansion sites at 20, sorry. I am the second newest owner in my row. I therefore claim to have a historical sense of the effect that Columbia Grammar's expansion has had on the neighborhood. We object to the claims that Columbia's headmaster makes regarding having improved our neighborhood. We are a community that values education. In our row, we have sent our children to many, many New York institutions, including Horace Mann, Dalton, Brearley, and Riverdale, and I'm sure also Columbia Grammar and Prep. So it's not personal about the school itself. Still, we are not averse to sharing our community with institutions, including PS-84, which is across the street, and to the proposed expansion at Trinity, which is directly across Columbus Avenue at Ninety-second Street. We welcomed the development of the lots flanking 7 West Ninety-second Street for Columbia Grammar's purposes. Having seen the effect, however, we are now in accordance that the subsequent impact of the school's traffic in the neighborhood has worsened our safety and well-being steadily, and we're far away. There has never been even a nominal community outreach by Columbia Grammar and Prep. Yes, I guess you have had those two communities. I did go to the, to the town hall meetings that were really just a dog and pony show. And we have never been notified of, we're not considered as part of the community. I won't dispute that Columbia Grammar's attempts, has attempted to control the drivers by hiring some men in yellow vests, and they stand there haplessly as the big SUVs with former cops drive in and around all over the neighborhood. And there's absolutely no stipulation made that kids, I mean, I hear that— no stipulation made that kids, I mean, I hear that there is outreach being done now for kids to actually ride the bus. It's about time, but no kid, I mean, there are no kids getting onto buses here. The kids are all getting in and out of limos, and it's considered a hardship if they take a yellow cab. So that's just a community person speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? Okay. Yes.
With the board's permission, as I said, we want to make iticopious notes, so we're going to make a full written presentation to the board. But Dr. Richard Sahoyan, the headmaster of the school, is here. He's been the headmaster for the last 33 years, and if the board would allow him just a couple of minutes, he would like to address this question of programmatic need.
Okay.
Dr. Sahoyan?
Good afternoon. Thank you. As Howard Weiss indicated when he first introduced this topic, we've had a longstanding goal, and certainly a critical need, for a middle school division at our school. We have an archaic approach, K through six as a lower school, and seven through 12 as an upper school. I think we're the last school in New York City public private. The entire public school system has wisely, over the last 50 years, moved to a middle school approach, and that's been true of all of America. We have expanded for the last 30 years in various ways. We've never quite been able to create that middle school division, which we strongly need. The difficulty of raising children today, from childhood, to get them prepared for high school is a daunting task, and the middle school years have proven to be an essential way, not simply from a pedagogical point of view, but from a point of view of developmental issues, all the issues of drugs, alcohol, bullying, eating disorders, name it. All of those come to the front in the middle school years, and we need a dedicated faculty and a dedicated space for that very critical period of time to prepare students for adulthood. So we've been waiting for this for many years. This project will allow us to do it. Now, in terms of enrollment, we are only increasing enrollment over the course of four years by 30 students. The 75 number, I think, I don't want to put a thought in this gentleman's head, comes from the fact that we are alleviating the pressures on the high school space by taking 75 students from seventh grade out of that high school, and putting them into the middle school. It's not 75 new students, it's relocating 75 existing students. And so that's going to give the high school more space, and it's going to allow us to have six, five, six, and seven in a self-contained middle school environment, which is our goal. Okay? Now, as far as traffic, if I could just say one word about traffic, this is a mutual goal. Obviously, we want traffic to be safe, orderly, to work well for the neighborhood, as well as all of our students and faculty, and parents. We've gone from two traffic people full-time five years ago to nine today, one of whom is from Sam Schwartz Engineering, trained in pedestrian management. We're ongoing, as Howard Weiss also pointed out, relationship with Sam Schwartz to do all that we can, new ideas, new approaches, to continue to make it a safer and more workable environment. We think we've improved it enormously. We're going to continue to do so. Thank you very much.
Excuse me. In terms of the high school space that you're going to vacate, what will become of that space?
We are going to just simply expand our program in the high school, not enrollment. We, the 30 number comes from nine through 12, we're going to increase enrollment from 122 at present, for each grade level, nine through 12, to 125. That's three students a grade level. That's 12 students. Now, we have approximately 100 families a year, to no avail, applying to our sixth grade, because the public schools end at fifth grade, and they seek admission into our sixth grade. We are not able to accommodate any of those families, except for one or two, when our family leaves our school. So we'd like to take in six a year over the, over the next three years, or once the building is completed, and that's 18. So we're adding 12 to the high school, and 18 students in grades six, seven, and eight, and that's the 30 students. So it will have a minimal impact on, on traffic or the situation as you find it now. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So with the board's permission, we would request four weeks to make the further submission.
Okay. So that is July 22nd?
Thank you.
And Mr. Reyes, who want to respond back by August 5th?
That would be fine, but also, it's great that they hired Sam Schwartz, but the users are certainly working with them to know exactly what they're doing, because this has been ongoing for several years. We don't know exactly what the suggestions are, and we'd like to help them.
We're happy to do that. We will share with Mr. Reyes, on behalf of his clients, the work that we're going to submit, and we certainly would happy beyond that on an ongoing basis to meet.
Okay.
May I have one week after their submission?
Yes, so, yeah, so that's the 5th of-
So that would be August 12th?
August 12th, and we'll have the hearing on August 19.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Thank you, commissioners.
This concludes the public hearing.